All right, Mr. Chairman, we're live again.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're out of our executive session, which was for engine and charity. Our next agenda item is an action item. These are claims, board order claims and one junior college.
One junior college.
Everybody get a chance to look at those. Ed, you have any questions?
I did. I don't have any questions, but I thought it was kind of neat. We have one kid applying for a junior college thing, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they.
It's the time of year.
Yeah.
And then Rita, did you get a chance to look at those mileage?
I did. I did the math again on them and they're correct. The totals, sometimes you get to the bottom of it and it includes meals. Mileage and then there's meal reimbursements as well and then cellphone for those, the three prosecutors, so.
Well, the one that kind of hung me up was prosecutor Noggles. His was 210 miles, but it was $210 and I'm going, that doesn't look right.
Yeah, and it's, it's the.
But that includes meals too.
Yeah, it's a full reimbursement.
Okay, okay. That's where I was confused.
Like, no, miles?
And then we have, um, six board orders?
Yes.
And the question I had on that one was the one for Stephanie's. That was, where is it?
Very last one should be.
Oh, that's DocuLink's. There it is, the first one. This is for March and April.
Uh, let me see. I may not have changed that.
SRS Title III, March and April of 2022.
Ah, since May. So it's, she was way behind on her billing on these. This is May and June. She's, she's just about caught up. I didn't, I didn't change it on the.
So this is two months' worth?
Yes.
Okay, because that's about what it runs about for two months.
Yes. Yeah, last month was a lot bigger.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we pay the claims and six board order claims and one junior college tuition.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that.
And move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
We just do the total claims? Is that what, the total?
We have to do each board claim by itself.
Yeah.
Board order claim, I mean.
I have a question in the remaining cash analysis.
Now would be the time.
Um, let me try. I was trying to bring it up here.
I don't have that one with me.
But we have a huge amount of remaining cash, it looks like, in the road and bridge. Is that?
I'm gonna refer to.
Just close to the end of the fiscal year. I don't.
I maybe, I, I don't know exactly what I'm doing reading that altogether, Douglas, but I'm just trying to find it here.
And you're correct, Commissioner Allen. As of right now, there is a balance of remaining cash in the road and bridge department for fiscal year 2023. I'll need to take a look and give you the exact amount that we published, but there are a significant amount of that is going to be utilized next year to fund fiscal year 2023's budget. So that amount will be reduced.
Yeah, I just thought, gosh, that's a lot. But I appreciate that. I just, yeah, I'm sure I knew there was a.
Did you verify the person's.
But I know we're talking about.
Reduction.
And it's gonna happen. Commissioner Allen, the, the road department has significant expenditures that are still gonna come out for this year. And then there's roughly about $4 million of that remaining cash will be utilized to fund next year's budget.
Thank you. You want me to sign the front one, dude?
Yes, please. Yeah, I'll have the very. I was looking on the copy when I was sending them out.
You want to handle this?
All of these?
Yeah, there's seven in that pile.
Let's sign on the last end here, I guess.
Sure.
You.
I don't know if you saw that one, but that was more I signed, the longer worse it gets. I've been on it. It's gonna forward, forward to you and then I didn't get it done. 8,000 acres now. Chip in here.
Okay, thanks Rita. Have a good day. We're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item, our reports from elected officials. I'm assuming Doug with the assessors not available today.
I have not heard, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I guess you're up first.
Commissioners, good morning. Last week, after the commissioner meeting, I traveled to Sandpoint for the annual Idaho Association of Counties Clerks Conference. Great conference. We had the opportunity to meet with the Secretary of State's office to kind of discuss the transition in January when the new Secretary of State takes office, whoever that, that might be. But we did have some great conversations with them regarding their request for proposal that they put out for a new potential voter registration system right now or with TenX. But the Secretary of State has determined to put out a request for proposal. So we'll be potentially moving to another voter registration system, but there's always a hope that we will continue with the company that we have now or the software that we have now. We also had the opportunity to meet with the Secretary, or excuse me, the State Tax Commission's office regarding the L2 forms, the property tax levy forms and the modifications that will continue to be done on those forms to make it easier for the general public to understand, to make it easier for the taxing districts to fill out. So it's nice that they are progressing with improving the L2 forms. So that was a great opportunity to meet directly with them. And then the last day of the conference was meeting with the State Controllers Office regarding More Transparent Idaho and the transitioning of having all of our financial expenditures, revenues listed on the State Controller's website, kind of like how it's listed now for all of the state offices. All of the taxing districts will now be required to report that information on the controller's website. So we're working with the controllers on what information will be readily available, how it's going to look. That was, again, we're trying to develop that reporting with the State Controller's office. It's gonna take some time. Officially, I think they have to take that over by 2025. So it's, we're in the beginning stages of working through that new requirement. Commissioners, if you saw in the Star News, our budget was published. So we're going to begin preparations for our actual public hearing. That's what our office will spend the rest of the week on, is preparing for our public hearing for our fiscal year 2023 budget presentation. So that's kind, that's the majority of what our work is going to be this week. We do have court in operations and we are also going to be interviewing for our deputy recorder position. We are hopefully going to be interviewing one applicant that we have received so far. And Commissioners, with that, I will stand for any questions.
Doug, the RFP the state's gonna do on this new election deal, are we gonna, are the counties gonna have to pay a lot of that cost?
No.
I think the last time we got.
We didn't have to pay any of that cost.
We had to pay it upfront, then we got reimbursed or something later or something like that.
Not for the, not for the, no, not for the voter registration software. We are not on the hook for it. That's all this comes from the state. All of those costs are.
Well, let's hope it doesn't end up like ITD did.
Let's hope. Well, and we've had some issues with TenX, but we've been able to work through those issues. But yes, it's nerve wracking that we don't know if that's going to be our software for elections until January.
Was there any discussion about moving to electronic voting?
Well, that's, there's always that, the opportunity for registered voters to request an absentee ballot, but I.
On the phone?
No, no.
Because I seen an article in the news today about a county, I think it was in Missouri or Michigan, that are, they're trying it out. You can vote by your phone. I thought, finally.
At this point in time, that is not in the works in the state of Idaho, no.
Okay, any more questions for Doug?
Uh, no, I guess not. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doug. Brian, good morning.
Good morning. Um, not a whole lot to report. In the prosecutor's office, we were staying busy. We've got a, should have a misdemeanor trial this week, I expect. Um, we continue to negotiate with the tenants or the landlords, I guess, over at the Amerititle Building. I'm optimistic that we're close to having a deal in place and so we're, we're still working on that. One of the things that that, that will afford us is the opportunity to, to bring in, I've got a chance to hire a extern. The University of Idaho does externships for students where they basically spend a semester working for us and they get school credit for it. We don't pay them. They, they get credit. I did the same thing when I was in law school and it's a great program. It's a great benefit to us because we get four or five months of work out of somebody and, and, and they get school credit for it. So it's a, it's a really good program. It's a good way for us to kind of get a little extra work done. One of the challenges that we have in our office is Oak tends to get buried with projects and, and stuff. And so to have somebody full-time that can research and do some things for Oak especially will be really, really helpful. And if we have this place, this office space, we'll have a place that we can put this kid.
So you can request someone from grad school, like criminal side or civil side or something like that, or you, they just send whoever they want?
Well, usually it's somebody that, you know, I'm, I, I worked with when I was in Ada County. I worked with both the Concordia and the U of I extern coordinators and they would, you know, in, in Ada, we usually had two or three every year. This here, we don't get as many because, you know, it kind of depends on whether they have a place to stay up here. But apparently there's a law student who has a, a place up in Donnelly or lives up in Donnelly and is interested in working up here. So whenever we have those opportunities, obviously we want to take advantage of them and the, the new space will allow us to do that. So that, that'll be really nice to, to have that help and hopefully we can kind of keep that tradition going and try and encourage people to come up here and make the experience good. You know, we don't do a, a ton of recruiting in our office, but man, it's, it's sure a nice way to recruit when you can get law students to come work for you for a few semesters. You get to know them, they get to know you. And, and if it's a good fit, you know, you already know that. You don't have to go through the.
Right.
Process. So it's pretty nice.
Well, and then be able to live in Donnelly, you already hear that helps a lot.
Yes, yes. That's a big bonus. So, so I'll meet him this morning and we'll, we'll talk to him. That'll be for the spring semester, starting in January. So January through May, approximately that timeframe is when we'd have him, so.
You know, Brian, how close are you on the lease? I mean, are we gonna be within another month or so or a couple of weeks or tomorrow or?
Well, the hope is, I mean, in the, so we, we sent a letter of intent last week with a, an offer and terms. And in that letter, it specified a, a begin date of October 1. We wanted to have the, the lease term match the, the budget cycle. So, so it'd be a two, one-year terms is kind of what we were, they, they wanted a two-year term. We said, look, we, we can do one year at a time, but, but kind of express our commitment to, to be there for a minimum of two years.
Is that kind of the holdup? Is that limit on the one-year term or is it?
I don't think so. I don't know, you know, I don't know exactly what the, I don't even know if there is a holdup really. We've just kind of, um, we've had a couple of, uh, offers kind of back and forth. And so we think with the budget being improved, this last one was, was a strong offer and I think, I'm pretty optimistic that we'll be able to put something together.
Good.
Are you, are you fully staffed in your department, Brian?
Yeah, we are, we're in good shape with our, our, uh, our professional staff, you know, our, our legal assistants, victim witness coordinator, all that. You know, we're, the civil side is really busy. Oak is, is sometimes buried a little bit. And so we're just gonna have to see over the next year whether Ashley and I can come to rescue enough to, to bail him out when he's, when he gets too buried or whether it's gonna make sense to, to get somebody else in that civil division.
It's kind of unfortunate you really need that much staff, but on the other hand, I was just, I was looking in, I don't know where I was looking, but researching something. I looked at one, for instance, like Bonner County has like about 20-some people in that department.
Oh, really?
You know, I'm looking, I'm thinking, hmm, we're not quite close to that. And I know, and I really personally really appreciate Brian and the help that he's been for us and, and that's been a real positive for our county, I think, the last few, couple, the last year or two.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree 1,200%. It's a huge difference than it was under the past leadership.
Yeah.
The morale's up and everything is just going great. We just.
Yeah.
Don't need to step on any rocks or throw anything in the way and let it work. So.
And we don't need to burn that department out. We'll continue to need them.
Right, yeah. And we're, we're well aware of that and we're all kind of, kind of, from, from the staff to, to myself and Ashley. We, you know, we're, we're keenly aware of, of his workload and we, we want to make sure that we, we don't, we don't burn him out. He, you know, he's one of these guys that you almost have to, you, you gotta kind of kick him out the door to take a vacation every now and then. I've had to, I've had to boot him out once or twice to go get a rest and, and take a vacation. So he works really hard. He's dedicated to the work. He does it really well and, and that is a, a really important piece. You know, you guys know so much of what you do has so many intersections with Idaho code and even, you know, some federal code in there and just the, the kind of, um, you know, it's, it's really nice to have somebody you can trust to say, hey, when, before we make this decision, what are the legal ramifications? And knowing that stuff is, I just don't see how you do, do this work without a good legal advice. So we, it's certainly a priority for us as well.
Well, and I think the system that he's set up with the cover sheets on some of the contracts, I, I'm hoping another year or so, things will be a lot faster for him and he won't have to review so much stuff, but.
Right.
He got a lot of stuff piled on him pretty hard.
Yeah, it's unlikely.
Yeah, and we just never had a, a really good civil help before.
Yeah.
And we were hung out there a few times. So it's been great to have both you guys.
Yeah.
Everything is, everything is just going great.
Yeah, it's important to have, have somebody. I mean, you gotta, you, you, you at least have somebody, have to have somebody dedicated to the civil side of things. Um, and we were just, we were just really lucky to get him over here from the Department of Ag.
Okay, anything else for Brian?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Uh, Patty, Sheriff, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Don't you wish it'd snow?
Yeah, so anyway, needless to say, we are busy. We're still keeping up with our other duties. Civil, civil process is, is picking up. I don't know if that's because the courts are open now and now we're starting to receive more documents for service and writs of execution and so, trying to keep up with that. And then dealing with the fire and the roadblock. So our guys are on 12-hour schedules until such time as we need to, you know, that we can remove those roadblocks. But we're getting lots of help from search and rescue. We really appreciate their time out there helping. And the night we did the evacuations, you know, McCall Fire was down helping on the north end and keeping people out. So we appreciate them as well.
Do you know, can we get compensated for that overtime through?
We've got two, we've got a finance meeting at 10 that I found out about last night when I was out at the camp. So we're gonna discuss what will go with the FMAG and what will, and attached to the fire and what will be on our law enforcement cooperative agreement with the Forest Service with the Payette and the Boise Forest. We have an addendum to that when it comes to fire and, but that road is a county road and so we would normally do some of that work anyway. So those are the things we need to get clarified and how we're gonna bill for both of those.
Okay. I think in the past, we've been compensated for some of it, but not all of it.
Right, yeah. And definitely the request for our marine deputies out there. So that will be attached to the fire for sure.
Never even thought about that.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically it seems like that the fire thing would pay for stuff that's above and beyond our normal things. One of them I thought about is, what about, you know, we're using, for instance, our volunteer search and rescue quite a bit. And under this particular scenario, that should change that. So there might be a possibility there.
Yeah, we're gonna discuss all that at 10. So, and, and I've already talked with finance yesterday. We had a couple of phone calls about this very thing. So we're, we'll be talking about that at 10. So, and we appreciate, Doug sent the captain and I a disaster cost claim form and so we're keeping tabs on that and Sergeant Knapp and Sergeant Littrell are keeping tabs on all the officers' time. They have, when they sign on, if it's for, they're either gonna be working their regular duties or they'll be on fire. And so everything under fire is getting logged separately so we can keep those, keep track of those and the costs.
Right.
So.
And Sheriff, the people that, oh, want to be able to access their cabin or their area, or in my case, the guy wants to check on these cows. Is it Officer Knapp or Officer Littrell or both?
So if they're permittees, they're working directly with fire and they have someone who's already reached out to, to those permittees, whether it's the, the logging or, or the livestock.
Right.
They are, they have already got someone who has reached out to them and they're working with them on that.
You happen to know that person's name?
Uh, I can get that. I, I know I have it. It's just that I can't think of it off the top of my head. Because they do, they have somebody on that team and it may even be the local, you know, it might be Jake or someone from his office. But I know that they're working. I think Mr. Phillips was at the meeting the other day and they talked with him as well. So they have reached out to those permittees and, and are working with them. Obviously, the, the fire team or someone would make sure that they're in with them and know the best time to allow them in. It's the same with the evacuees. Right now, you know, that, they're working really hard over there to not let that fire get to their homes. But it's too dangerous for the homeowners to get in there right now. So, and we'll reach out to them. We can reach them by Code Red and allow them, and we've got some, you know, names and phone numbers and contact people too. So we'll reach out to them. When, if there is a window of time that we can let them go in for a short period of time, we will. But, you know, we, we can't predict what, how that fire's gonna react to, to the weather. So.
Is there a kind of like a, any kind of a clearinghouse thing at online or wherever where those people can go? Like for instance, that, you know, if I, if I'm a homeowner there and I really don't know any of these personalities, I mean, do we have anything out there media-wise that would be a logical connection for them?
Well, it's put on our Facebook page. It's on the counties, I'm sure. It's on the fire every day in their PIOs. It shows that if, you know, when it comes to the evacuated people, they, you know, they can call our office. And we have, we've given them the non-emergency line to dispatch and they can forward those to.
Yeah, I just wonder how that, if I'm one of those.
Well, it's been working and, you know, and we haven't. And I know there's a lot of people in the community that have offered to help in any way possible. We haven't had, had anybody request that at this time. So, but we're willing to help in any way we can. And there's a lot of, a lot of people on their Facebook and I've actually written down, when I see them on there, that if we need to, need these resources, we can reach out to those people and say, yes, we do need those resources.
Yeah, it's been pretty heartwarming to see the community kind of step up.
Yeah, everybody wants to help and.
Yep.
So, and I, I did drive over, moved the, the, the south roadblock up closer to the Anderson Creek Road. So it's open. So that's where that is. And drove around down in Campbell Creek area and there, there definitely, there's homeowners doing some work around their places there. You can hear saws going on, you know, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of people working around their place right now.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I could see that. There weren't a lot of people I saw out there, but I could hear, you know, some of that work going on and, and it was, as far as local traffic was pretty mild yesterday over there.
There wasn't really a lot of traffic heading down the canyon yesterday either. I don't know if folks just didn't come up here this weekend or what, but.
Well, I know that Trinity Pines donated a bunch of stuff that they had prepared because they had some, a big cancellation. So. And I don't know if that had to do with the fire, if there were other circumstances. I don't know, but.
Hey, anything else?
Let me see. I, no, I, I, if it hasn't changed that the road closure across the dam and over that way should start today or work on that. So.
Is that, is that work related, not fire related?
No, no, this was scheduled. We met last, last year about this time with the city and, and Bureau of Rec. And so they, you know, were selecting a timeframe to do this and they put that information out and they're gonna start, they should be starting that today.
I drove by there, so I saw it closing.
You know, it's probably a good thing we didn't do Lakeshore this year. It's gonna be done next year. If we're in the middle of that construction job with all this going on, we'd have to shut that down too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then you're gonna have that, that work south of, you know, from 108 down to the head of the canyon too, so.
Yeah, they've been in contact with me looking for a place for all those guys to live while they're doing that job. And I suggested Wellington. It's Miss Ferry, but I don't know if they're gonna use it or not. But they're looking for water and a bunch of stuff. Western construction.
Yeah, I don't know what, after Labor Day, what the, the Smith Ferry project will look like if it, if we're gonna close again or not. You know, usually after Labor Day, they've been closing it down for those four hours. So that might impact that idea.
That's another good one to bring up too. They're getting pretty close on that dirt pile.
Oh, yeah, they're doing good. Yeah, it's looking good.
I mean, those guys, I think they're running almost all 24 hours a day. I hear them anyway at night. But. Hey, anything else?
Well, yeah, is that, is the traffic thing within the fire perimeter thing, has that been pretty smooth with the access and all the stuff, roads and?
Yeah, people are being good. And I know that they reached out to me, you know, we had the discussion at the meeting Saturday about the road. They're keeping it, you know, they're keeping it watered, but they wanted to know, they said, we're doing a little bit of damage to the road. Who do we contact in the road department? I gave them Jeff's contact information, so.
Because that usually is pretty critical, yeah.
Yeah, so they were gonna reach out to, to Jeff.
And we'll, I think we'll see Jeff later today. We'll find out if he's doing any work on that.
Yeah.
Keeping that from getting too rough. Okay?
Right.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. Be safe.
Next week, hopefully, next week can hopefully be easier for you.
Next one on the list is Johanna. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I've got a few things on the list to update you about. I was gone two weeks ago at the annual treasures conference up in Bonners Ferry. And that was an extremely beneficial experience for me. It was my first, first time going to one of those. And so I made a lot of good acquaintances within the other treasures from around the state and learned a lot of new things, got some good tips and tricks for operating an office well. So I hope to implement some of those things in the coming weeks and months. I saw you last Monday for our tax deed hearing. And since then, four of the properties have paid off. We received payment on Tuesday of last week. It was an e-check payment, so it takes about four days to process. So that was processed on Friday. I had held off on recording the actual tax deed documents because I knew that that was coming down the, the line. And so the two that are remaining on the list will get recorded today. Uh, so to give you an update on that, and those were the two that I, I don't see anything happening between now and the auction that we've tentatively scheduled for October 17th. So we will probably hold, hold an auction that day and auction those two properties off.
How did the one go with the, the one that was in probate? Did that one get paid?
Yes, that is the one, so that was one individual owner for properties.
Right.
And once I contacted the attorney office that handled the probate case, they were able to get me a contact information for the, the heir of the estate. And he didn't know that the properties were there and that they were delinquent on taxes. So he immediately paid over the phone when I called him.
That's, that's so good that worked out that week. Because that, those are kind of difficult when they're in probate, you never know.
It is, and it would have been a sad situation to see him go where, and he didn't know about it, so.
I don't know, Doug, have we ever had to take property back from someone we auctioned off to?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of, that'd be a tough challenge to do.
That would be a very tricky situation.
If we could legally do it.
Right, right. I'm thankful that we don't have to in this instance.
Good catch.
So Alisa Bailey started as my deputy treasurer last Tuesday.
Alisa?
Alisa, yep, you'll have to stop by the office and meet her. Uh, everything is going wonderfully, training is plugging right along. And I'm very happy to be fully staffed at this point, so.
Good news.
Very good news. We are approaching tax season very quickly and I'm, will be happy to have a fully trained, fully staffed office going into that. So the last thing that I needed to update you on is our quarterly statement of cash. So typically at the end of every quarter, I will bring you the statement of cash and have you sign it and show you that our accounts are all in balance. I have not done that for the month of June. And the reason is because we've had some software issues with Computer Arts, the program that produces those reports for us. I just got off the phone with one of the software developers this morning. That problem has been fixed. And so now we need to go back, it's been broken since the second week in May. So now we need to go back and complete the monthly reconciliations up until the quarter end, and I will have those reports for you. I intend to email them to you this week as soon as I get them. And then we can present and bring them forward for you on September 6th at the next, my next update. But I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
That's in progress.
And Doug, are you going to put some in the minutes stating that?
I have.
Okay, I think that's important that that's in the minutes where we are.
Yep.
In that process. Okay, thanks.
That was everything that I have for you this morning.
Any questions for Johanna?
Yeah, did you get your desk?
Uh, I believe that they're in the process of being ordered. Scott Klingon was working with the Office Savers to get those ordered. And I believe, you know, I did a lot of research into choosing the type of desk and the supplier for the desk. And those ones were in stock. So they shouldn't, you know, some desks are six months or eight months out, but the ones that I chose were in stock. So hopefully we'll see those in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome, good, awesome. You know, we need to save your old desk, just to see how it goes with this lease down at the.
Oh, yes.
Because they may need.
They may need some furniture down there.
Just to get through until we can get them some.
Yeah.
But I think we have a building up here that's got some desks in it too as well. I'm not sure if they're still there or not.
Okay.
I don't think they are, Mr. Chairman.
Are they all gone now? We used to have desks up in the Lake Fork shop office, and there were desks everywhere that, they all weighed like 800 pounds and all steel desks.
They are very heavy.
Very heavy and they really take the skin off your knees when you bump them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good news.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right, see you, Johanna. Hey, we're going to move on into department heads. Both Annette and Skip have sent me texts this morning. They're not able to attend. Haven't heard anything from Melissa. So we'll just move right on down to HR, Pat, and you're up.
Oh, my gosh, that's got to be a.
It'll be a quick meeting today.
I guess, yeah. Just wanted to let you know that I did hear from the state insurance fund and our workers' comp. MOD rate will go up probably in October, I think that's their time. We had a couple of really big claims.
Was it the one with the eye?
The eye, and then we had the guy that slipped and fell on the dock.
Oh, that's right.
And hit his head, yeah. So we've had some sizable ones. And then the, I don't think the snow groomer one has hit the MOD rate yet, but it's, went from 0.94 to 1.08. So it, it went up quite a bit. And I gotta, I don't know whether the, the one, the snow groomer that had the neck injury is partially disabled now. So I don't know if that's hit yet or not. It probably will for sure hit on the next one, but maybe one of those others will fall off.
So do you know if it goes to 0.94 to 1.08, that's over about a one and a half percent? So then the premium will go up about one and a half percent?
The premium will go, that just means that it went from calculating it based on 0.94 to 1.08.
So Doug, did we get that in the budget?
I'm just texting Gabby right now, Mr. Chairman, to find out what we, what MOD rate we utilize, use to analyze that cost and for budgeting purposes, I don't know.
Well, since we're published the budget, we're kind of late to do it now. We'll have to take it out of general fund reserve or something to pay it.
If we need to move the money at the end of the year, yeah, we'll take a look.
Shouldn't be too much, but it's going to be a little.
Mr. Chairman, if you can just give me one.
Sure.
And I didn't get this information until last week, so.
Yeah, it always happens, it comes in after we finalize the budget every year and so.
Yeah, and he came and visited me and he said, and then he said, well, we don't have the MOD rate yet, but as soon as they get it, I'll let you know. Oh, he did.
Mr. Chairman, I feel pretty comfortable. We increased it to 124,000 from 118,000.
6,000, yeah.
Right now, we've only expended 85,000 or 72% of the budgeted amount has been expended. And we are at 89% of the fiscal year has elapsed. So I do feel that we budgeted.
What, what did you say, 126,000?
That's we.
That's what your budget is for.
Yeah, we increased it to 124,800.
Oh, 124,000, okay.
Right now, we've expended 72% of that budget of 118,000.
Yeah, we should be okay, I get about $7,500 more.
I think we'll be all right.
Okay.
So the other thing, just to note, as far as workers' comp goes, is that the elected officials are in an outside sales type category. They're looking, uh, workers' comp is looking at changing that. So I don't know whether that'll reduce the amount that we pay for the elected officials or not, I don't, I don't know. He just said that, that they were looking at re-categorizing those, those that we have in outside sales. Because what they did is they put the elected officials in there, and I don't know why they put them there, but that was workers' comp decision, it wasn't ours, so.
Apparently, there must be some workers' comp unelected officials coming in for them to put them in the group. I, but I don't see how.
Yeah, I don't think how that works.
Unless it be maybe autorex or something, but.
It could be.
Could be.
Yeah, who knows?
Well, everybody wants more.
Yep. So we have a road tech starting on September 6th.
Okay.
We have our IT, um, our IT technician starting on September 6th. We have made an offer to another road tech, but I don't know what's happened to him. He was all gung-ho and ready to get started. He signed his offer letter and then I haven't heard a thing from him. He wanted to start tomorrow, but can't, it can't happen. The earliest now is September 6th. So I don't, I don't know what happened with that one, we may have to hire somebody else. Um, we do have a benefits fair on August 31st, and that will be from 10:30 to 1:30.
Well, that's not the job for, that's a benefits.
That's a benefits fair.
Yeah?
Just opportunity, I just want everybody to know that it's coming and opportunity to meet with some of our, our representatives. And we are going to give away a prize every hour, encourage people to come.
And that's over at EOC?
EOC, yep.
Thank you. And what time of day is that?
10:30 to 1:30.
And what's that date again?
October 31st.
10:30 to 1:30.
Yep, yep. Okay, now on the community job fair, I don't know whether, it's probably an action item, may not be. What, what we want to do is have a job fair where, yeah, we're going to tout the jobs that we have open, but invite the community. So if the city has positions, they have open, the fire department, we know they have open positions. And the hospital has open positions.
So is the school, I think, too?
The school, yep. Anybody that has open positions around, we would like to invite them to the community job fair.
And you might check with the Forest Service, Pat, I don't know if they'd be interested, but I know they have a lot of openings.
Yep, so we'll be publishing it and working on that, that will also be at the EOC. The one thing that we will have is space constraints. So we have to determine how many people actually want to be, I mean, how many people we can accommodate as far as the booths and stuff within, within the EOC, and then we may have to cut it off, but that's the plan. So I wanted to make sure that you all knew about it. I don't know that it's an action item as much as just an information.
Do you have, have a date yet?
No, it's in October sometime.
I don't think we would do an action item then today, so.
Yeah.
But I think that's a great idea, especially if we can get everybody in on it and do some good marketing.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, that's good news, good job.
Yep, so that's, actually wasn't my idea, it was a couple of the people over in dispatch brought it forward. And I thought, well, why didn't I think of that?
Well, depending on the day, I might be able to help, any help, if you need anything, just stand around, look like I know something.
Yeah, yeah, because what I would like to do too is invite people that have open positions within the county to come and man, help man the booth so they can talk about their positions and, you know, what it's like to work in their department and those type of things, so, yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
That's all I have.
The benefits was August 30?
August 31st.
31.
Wednesday, the 31st.
10, 10 to 2?
10:30 to 11:30, or 10:30 to 1:30, I think is what I have.
1:30.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to change your medical plan or your 401 or any of that, Percy, that's the time to do it.
Yeah, if you have the, the Percy would be 401K and 457, those you can do at any time. But we will have representatives from the 457 and from Percy there. The 401K person is not going to be able to make it, but, but we'll also have people from. Oh, my gosh, I just, my blank, mine just went totally blank. So we have 457, Percy, Aflac will be there.
Pet insurance?
Pet insurance, they won't be there, but I'll have all the flyers and everything there.
I was trying to help you remember.
Yeah, I know, there's somebody else coming. Oh, the, the ideal, um, the way that people can save for education, for the tuition reimbursement, or tuition for their grandkids or kids.
And is there going to be somebody there for medic, medical, what do they call, medical health savings accounts? Where you can save so much a year for like.
Medical reimbursement?
Whatever it's called.
Yes, I, that, we're just trying to get the contract done from HR Pro, but I'll have information, I can answer any questions you want on that usually. So that, I did that in my previous life. So I managed, or was an administrator for those accounts. So, yeah, there's not as many as I want, I haven't been able to get ahold of Cascade Medical Center yet. So I'll work on that as well. So, yeah.
All right, nothing else for Pat?
Questions?
Thank you, have a great day.
Yeah.
Jeremy did text me this morning and he doesn't have anything to report. I'm not sure if Cindy's here. Didn't think she was. He sent me something about she was going to be gone, so Larry, you're next.
Chairman, Commissioner?
Good morning.
Clerk Miller, I have no changes to the budget.
Right. Appreciate that.
I thought you might. Oh, my gosh. So I was involved in that statewide Zoom call on UTB issues on groom trails. And it went pretty much how I expected it to go, no decisions. It'll be discussed in the ISSA convention this fall. Hopefully, it'll, it'll stay the way it is, it'll be a county option. Advisory board, we got together, discussed brushing trails where we were on equipment. Of course, that's all going to change with this fire. We're going to have to get out as soon as they open it up and look at hazards and, and diamonds that are on the trees and signage that's missing and get that replaced before the season comes up. I was supposed to meet with Whitewater Association down at Cabart, but they didn't show up, so, you know, that's okay. We're, we're in the process now of, we got a bid on finishing the end launch. We've got a bid coming down on a new slide. And so Dave and I talked about that and we'll try to put that together as one project for Corps of Engineers or Water Resources, whichever one decides to show up. That way we don't have to double up on that and then apply for a single grant.
Good, good.
With that done. PFC was an interesting discussion, mainly about granite meadows, of course. How many years, what, six years we've been discussing granite meadows? The biggest discussion, of course, is trying to connect Warren Wagon over to Brondage Reservoir via copper creek. And we got some more information on that today, which really looks good. I think there's potential for us to get that done. When we did a vote on, on the whole recommendation, it was, everybody voted yes except for one person.
Is that in the roadless area?
Yes, it does, there's a small section that goes through primitive. But roadless does allow trails and especially in that level of, of roadless. And we're actually on, most of it, we're on a hardened road bed.
There are existing road there.
Yeah, we've ground-truthed it already.
Because I know we stopped a couple of trails up north and one out on Meadow Creek lookout, which is above Studenite, that, that Yellow Pine folks wanted, and we didn't approve that. And so that's not going to happen out there, and I'm thinking it's going to come back and bite us, but we'll see.
Well, this one's going to be, when you see it, this will be listed because by connecting Warren Wagon and Brondage Reservoir, that's going to take a lot of pressure off Brondage Road, because that is a mess-up. There's so many, again, it's one of those things where we're funneling everybody to one spot. And that'll also open up because we've got our, a brush creek.
Sure.
Turn that into campground, Francie Wallace into a campground, and so that'll make a great access point. And I, nobody wants it to be a full-size road. We want it to be, you know, more of a trail system.
50-inch?
Uh, 50 or 62, whatever they decide. The Forest Service, basically what we recommended was that they analyze the possibility of it. We're not asking them to approve it at this point. We just need to get it analyzed so we know what we're looking at. Uh, working on grants, we kind of tried to put together a form, an outline form on our grant system. So then we can do the outline, so it's all ready to go to a grant writer, we'll give it to Doug and let Doug decide what direction that he wants to go with it. We've already got the, the roof packages down at Wellington, they should be starting that pretty soon. So I expect to get a bill. I contacted, uh, quick contacted with Karen, I'm not sure what direction she wants to go in on the management of that grant, because we've got to get our reimbursements and everything going as soon as we get a bill for it. We moved the groomer for the fire, we moved the groomer from the grooming garage down to Campbell Creek. Uh, so it's sitting down there and I've been going down there twice a day and making sure there's no damage. There's so much equipment sitting down there in that parking lot, it's craziness.
You know, does that have a lockable gas tank on it?
No, it doesn't.
We might want to think about buying locks for those groomers if they're available.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we don't have to worry about that. I have a contact at Diamond Fuel, they have trailers with 1,000 gallon tanks. If we decide we want to pump that tank out and save that. If we decide we want to pump that tank out and save that fuel.
Yeah, I, I'm kind of watching that fire and I'm going to talk to Jeff a little bit today about it and, uh, e- especially the, just the, the thousand gallon tank there at, at the Campbell Creek boat ramp.
And I understand there's some Forest Service personnel.
Huh?
There's Forest, Forest Service personnel there at.
Yes.
Groomer shed. So they probably will wrap that tank if it gets that.
Yeah, and it, it's a concrete lined tank too, but, um, they've also got those big red, um, uh, water containers set up all along West Mountain now, which it does two things. It kind of makes you feel like, oh, good. And then, oh shit.
Yeah, it's getting close when you.
How close is this fire, you know?
Yeah.
I'll tell you, when I left, uh, when I left the house and it really blew up, I, I never thought it would affect me the way it did. But, you know, all these people that leave in the fire, when they make phone calls, please be patient with them because it is very emotional. It is a very difficult thing to do. Um, w- why we're talking about that, if I, if you don't mind if I get on my soapbox for just a second. Dave and I were just talking about, he remembers back when, seven or eight years ago, we were talking about the French Hazard Project. And, uh, my gosh, it made it all the way through and nothing ever get, the only people that ever did anything was IDL. Now they, they did their thing. The Forest Service has done absolutely nothing. And here it is burning. How many years to get stuff done to issue contracts? And then I don't really blame the personnel at Forest Service. My gosh, we've been through how many rangers and, and temporary rangers? And Jake's always on, uh, uh, assignment someplace else. I don't know how these guys get anything done as it is.
And you knew we were losing Jake?
Uh, he's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gone to Sawtooth. I heard that.
Was it Sawtooth or San Matalas?
Sawtooth.
Okay.
Which is a good place for him. Sawtooth's got a lot of needs up there. And Jake's a good guy. I mean, he's really works hard.
We're going to miss him.
We're going to miss him. So what, we're, we're going to have a temp until October. And then we're going to have another temp until they find a full-time guy. And, uh, that's where we'll go from there. Um, so as soon as they open these trail systems, like I said, we'll be back up there and assessing hazardous trees and where our signage is gone and our diamonds that we put on the trees and stuff. Anyway, that's all I got for you guys. Thank you for letting me get on my soapbox there for a second.
Couple of things though. Um, I got called by Western Construction who are going to do the grinding from the head of the canyon to the Alpha Nursery. And they're looking for a place to camp. And I recommended it at Wellington. And I gave you your phone number to contact to.
Okay.
Work with. I don't know if they're going to, if that's what they want or not, but that's the only place I could think of.
Great place for them.
And it's a great place. All, most of the other campgrounds are full.
What are they doing with the, uh, uh, recycle?
We're working on that, but we talked once, a couple of times about maybe using one that entrances all the county roads up to the highway.
Sure.
And then Jeff said he would spread the gravel. All they have to do is dump it, but they don't really know how many loads are going to have extra.
Well, if they have extra, we can, you know, we got all that storage space down at Wellington too, where that other stuff is.
Well, they're going to start the heads. So they, I don't think they're going to want to drive all that stuff down through that.
I can understand that.
They're going to look for someplace close to get rid of it. And we suggested, you know, two or three loads at every county road that comes up.
Wouldn't mind seeing a couple of loads at the, uh, um, Clear Creek Campground too, on that first edge where they do the turning around right there. Try to harden that area.
That's a great idea. I'll keep that in mind if they.
Try to, try to harden that up.
Yeah, that would be great. Down in the park.
Yes, yes.
I'll, I'll, when he calls me, I'll, I'll push you towards that too. The other thing that, and it's not, I'm not looking for any reg or anything, but it looks like I'm going to get appointed to the Autohold Lands Resource Coordinating Council.
Wow.
This is a state level. My nomination's in and it looks like it's going to be a go. I'll let you know. And I'm kind of excited about that one, cause you basically helped the state manage timberlands and the Good Neighbor Authority. And hopefully it'll create some more, some more timber harvests is my goal, but.
I thi- I think the frustrating part is, is we've got plans upon plans upon plans. It's the initiates, they, it's, it's the guys on the ground, it's the getting the contracts out and getting them done. That is the frustrating part. We've got some great plans.
Well, honestly, the issue right now is we don't have enough loggers. There's just not enough guys that do that work anymore. And they're coming in from, from, uh, Washington and Oregon to log here, so.
Hasn't the price of logs dropped quite a ways too?
Little bit, little bit. I think.
And the cost of fuel's gone up and.
430 down to about 380,000, I think the last time I looked, but.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. We haven't, I haven't been confirmed yet, but I think it's going to happen. And then I'll let you know how that goes.
And I've, I've been, uh, talking to Scott Harris almost daily on, uh, RAC, the RAC Committee and RAC Grants to see kind of pushing it ahead. But of course he's, hasn't had time, but, um.
Yeah, it seems like fire season. Everything else Forest Service does, it shuts down until they get through that.
I can kind of understand that, yeah.
Yeah. Hey, anything else for Larry?
One question, yes. How, uh, how did this fire affect, um, Cabarton as far as boating? Anything at all?
Not at all.
Oh, dear.
Not at all.
So that's all, that's all open and no problem?
Yeah, every, everything's open. It stops right at Campbell Creek. So Anderson Creek, of course, is closed and that's one of the big entry points for everybody.
Wasn't the bottleneck there or anything like that?
Okay. And you're going to be here for the JJ's discussion, uh, 7:30?
I'll be there for that one. And the other one I'll listen to.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So at this time, we've got a half an hour until our next agenda items. So we will mute the stream and see everybody back here at 10:30. Thanks, guys.
Your unmuted Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome back everybody. This is our at ten thirty on August twenty second. Our next item is not an action item. This is just a report from buildings of the ground. Scott, come on up. Oh.
Okay, well, we'll start with the Y cap building over there. Basically, it's all painted. Flooring is done in there. We'll start doing the trim on electrical and plumbing. They should get started on the windows. The windows are in. So we should get started on those and looks like we're on schedule. It'll be ready, you know, by the end of September so we can get them in there and stuff.
Did you get with Melissa on a moving date?
No, okay. No, I'm really like I say till we're pretty, you know, things are done, you know, it's actually ready, Jeremy. They could probably get in there and get, you know, the IT stuffs all all wires are pulled up and poking out so they could, they can probably, you know, get that, you know, close to being wrapped up and and stuff. But like I say, we just kind of got electrical plumbing trimming in the windows. And I did talk with Brent because we had an incident on an eye crimp claim up at the senior center. It was, let's see, it started back on the week of the eighth and they had like water dripping inside or wet spot on the tile and we turned it, it was the, oh, not the cooling tower, swamp cooler on the roof. So we shut it off, drained it. That was on Thursday. They, they came back in Monday afternoon to put their groceries for the next day and the whole ceiling had fallen out kind of in the one corner and stuff. So anyway, Castle Mountain, we got ahold of eye crimp. They assigned them a jester, Castle Mountain Homer Disaster Cleanup Division. Got it cleaned up and they did miss that week of serving lunches, but they had them back up and going the following week. So we're gonna have to get that repaired. It's gonna happen and they'll do that on the off days.
Is that tiles like these?
Yeah. But see above that is a fire, you know, the sheet rock and fire taped, you know, fire roof. So you have that.
It's been leaking a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd even like to, we went out and put a window unit in for them to keep them cool in there while they're cooking. We're gonna have to look at, you know, what it's gonna need. It just hasn't had maintenance over the years. And what happens is that, you know, the fabric in the sides gets saturated and starts leaking back down the ductwork and stuff and so we're gonna have to look how we kind of want to do that. If we just want to do away with it and use a window unit in there in the summer or.
Well, I guess if the window unit would work if it satisfies their need, but.
Because it's kind of, you know, the, the framework is sitting on everything else is kind of, it needs, it's a total rebuild.
Can we survive the winter without it? It's something.
It's only summertime use, you know, we winterize it in the winter. We drain it down and it's, you know.
I mean, we don't have to get to it this summer. Do you want to try and get to it this summer?
I'd like to see, you know, what I don't want to do is it causing leaking issues in the winter and stuff. It would make, you know, be able to just get up and tarp it and wrap it and seal it up as long as there's no, I want to make sure there's no leak in the roofing or something, but it looks like it came down through the ductwork and stuff is what it did and caused the problem. So.
We got that going on. We had household hazardous waste on Saturday. That went great. We had two hundred forty eight cars come through. That's what we did. I have some totals. I know I was contacted by the paper. They want some totals, but my contact person is not in till tomorrow. I have some sheets, but I'm not quite sure what their units are. They're, they have totals on them, but I don't know if they're gallons, pounds, some of them, you know, it's got like wet battery says six hundred. We didn't collect six hundred car batteries. So I don't know if that's pounds. So I need to get some clarifications.
And then they'll bill us for that?
Yeah, we have, you know, we kind of have a, they kind of give us a bid or a contract, you know, we had to have it signed for it. So they'll, but it went great. That's what it did. It sailed right along and got a lot of paint. You'd think after doing this for three or four years, you know, we kind of start running out, but people show up with so much paint and stuff. But yeah, it went really good. Talked with June. We're gonna move those cabinets out, the assessors off us down here when she gets back and stuff. Probably gonna actually, since we have no storage for some of the good ones is the one building they use at the fairgrounds down there to park their cars in in the winter. We're gonna probably put them in there is what we're gonna do for now.
What's the long-term plan for those?
Well, we'll see if there's any need for them. You know, I hate to throw good file cabinets away. I don't know if we're gonna need cabinets down at the, if the prosecutor is moving down there. So if they're gonna need some cabinets, we've got good ones that are, you know, half the time you get them and the blocks are missing out of them and stuff, but if they're good sound cabinets, we're just gonna hold on to them and see, you know, if there's a need for them and things.
Are they all empty now? Is that room all, they're all emptied out?
I believe most of them are. There were some files that June said they had to keep, but I believe most everything is empty. We'll get clarification when she gets back from her. She just wanted me to hold off moving anything till she got back. So. As far as my office trailer out there, we've got the fiber optic pulled in and stuff there. Hopefully, along with the windows, this next week or so, get working on skirting and get the stairs and, and stuff built. And then once that's got, that's built and Jeremy can get a computer.
Uh, like I say, we just kinda got electrical plumbing trimming in the windows. And I did talk with Brent, cause we had an incident, an eye crimp claim up at the senior center. It was, see, it started back on the week of the eighth, and they had like water dripping inside or wet spot on the tile. And we terminated it with the, um, oh, not the cooling tower, swamp cooler on the roof. So we shut it off, drained it. Um, that was on Thursday. They, they came back in Monday afternoon to put their groceries for the next day. And the whole ceiling had fallen out kinda in the one corner and stuff. So, um, anyway, Castle Mountain, we got ahold of eye crimp. They assigned them a jester, uh, Castle Mountain Homer Disaster Cleanup Division. Uh, got it cleaned up and, uh, they did miss that week of serving lunches, but they, uh, had them back up and going the following week. So we're gonna have to get that repaired. Uh, it's gonna happen and they'll do that on the off days.
Is that tiles like these?
Yeah. But see, above that is, uh, a fire, you know, the, the sheet rock and fire taped, uh, you know, fire roof. So you have that.
So it's been leaking awhile, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'd even like to, we went out and put a window unit in for them to keep them cool in there while they're cooking. Um, gonna have to look at, you know, what it's gonna need. It's just, it hasn't had maintenance over the years. And, um, what happens is that, you know, the, the fabric in the sides gets saturated and starts leaking back down the ductwork and stuff. And, um, so, um, we're gonna have to look how we kinda wanna do that. If we just wanna do away with it and use a window unit in there in the summer or, uh...
Well, I guess if the window unit would work if it satisfies their need, but...
Cause it's kind of, uh, you know, the, the framework it's sitting on and everything else is kinda, it needs, it's a total rebuild.
Um, can we survive the winter without it?
It's only summertime use, you know, we winterize it in the winter, we drain it down and it's, you know...
I mean, we don't have to get to it this summer? Do you wanna try and get to it this summer?
Um, I'd like to see, you know, what, I don't, what I don't wanna do is it causing leaking issues in the winter and stuff. Uh, we'd make, you know, be able to just get up and tarp it and wrap it and seal it up. Um, as long as there's no, I wanna make sure there's no leak in the roofing or something. But it looks like it came down through the ductwork and stuff is what it did and caused the problem. So... We got that going on. Um, we had household hazardous waste on Saturday. That went great. Um, we had two hundred and forty-eight cars come through, um, is what we did. Um, I have some totals. I know I was contacted by the paper. They want some totals. But my contact person's not in till tomorrow. Uh, I have some sheets, but I'm not quite sure what their units are there. They have totals on, but I don't know if they're gallons, pounds, some of them, you know, it's got like wet battery says six hundred. We didn't collect six hundred car batteries. So I don't know if that's pounds. So I need to get some clarifications.
And then they'll bill us for that?
Yeah, we have, you know, we kinda have a, they kinda give us a bid or a contract, you know, we had to have it signed for it. So they'll, uh, but it went great, um, is what it did. It sailed right along and, um, got a lot of paint. You'd think after doing this for three or four years, you know, we kinda start running out. But, uh, people show up with so much paint and stuff. Um, but yeah, it went really good. Um, talked with June, um, we're gonna move those cabinets out, the assessors off us down here when she gets back and stuff. Um, probably gonna actually, since we have no storage for some of the good ones is the one building they use at the fairgrounds down there to park their cars in in the winter. We're gonna probably put them in there is what we're gonna do for now.
What's the long-term plan for those?
Well, we'll just see if there's any need for them, you know, I hate to throw good file cabinets away. I don't know if we're gonna need cabinets down at the, um, if the prosecutor's moving down there. So if they're gonna need some cabinets, and we've got good ones that are, um, you know, half the time you get them and the blocks are missing out of them and stuff. But, um, if they're good sound cabinets, we're just gonna hold on to them and see, you know, if there's a need for them and things.
Are they all empty now? Is that room all, they're all emptied out?
Um, I, I believe there's, most of them are. There were some files that, uh, June said they had to keep. But I, I believe most everything's empty. Um, we'll get clarification when she gets back from her. She just wanted me to hold off moving anything till she got back. So, um, uh, as far as my office trailer out there, we're, um, we've got the fiber optic pulled in and stuff there. Uh, just hopefully along with the windows this next week or so, get, uh, working on skirting and get the stairs and, and stuff built. And then, um, once, uh, that's got, that's built and, uh, Jeremy can get, uh, my computer working in there. I can actually move over there and then we'll have to, uh, address what, uh, what we're gonna do with soil conservation, I guess there. You know, and then that will be another, um, we'll probably have to redo the ba-, well, the, the bathroom. We turned into a handicap bathroom in that building and, cause it's just a sink and, and toilet. We'll have to probably put the tub back in and, um, so we'll have two baths. Cause there's a, as it is right now, there's only a neo-angle shower, a small bathroom in the back. It's kinda off the master bedroom.
You kinda envision Castle Mountain coming in doing that work?
I could, yeah, I could get with them, have them come in, do that. Um, we do have the desks order for the treasure. Um, I wish I'd have waited just a little bit longer, cause I finally did get a bid from Idaho Prison, uh, Services. And, uh, cause they make, uh, Okie's went, suggested them, um, make really good desks. Um, unfortunately, by the time I got the, I placed order that morning with, and, uh, I got the bid that afternoon. It probably saved us about three hundred dollars per desk. But, um, they are coming. I have three for Johanna's office and then one for Pat.
And what are you gonna do with the old desk?
Uh, I don't really know yet.
Well, the reason we talked to Brian Noggin this morning about, we'll keep them for him if he needs any until we can get him.
Yeah.
And so I don't think I'd go too far with him. Maybe go where these file cabinets are going.
Yeah, something, yeah. And stuff. And then, uh, we're starting this Thursday and Friday on our annual fire inspection. So that'll be going around. We'll probably have some alarms going off in the doors that will be closing and stuff. Um, I already sent an email out letting everybody know, um, we'll be doing that in the annex, um, this week. So get our annual, our elevators are already done and stuff. So, um, we're, uh, boiler's done to the point we kinda need cold weather. So we can do some more, you know, running it and testing it. It's kinda hard to, to, uh, finish it up. But it's, uh, all in place. And so we'll just, uh, once winter gets here or some cold weather, we can fire it up and, and, um, troubleshoot it and that'll get completed. But, um, I did get, um, I had the Accos, um, control guy come out and, uh, look at, uh, so we can kinda get some, some automation and some more advanced alarms. So we know when things are, uh, have changed. Um, he's gotten me a bid on that. He also did go through and get all the numbers off every heat pump we have here. And, um, we can go to an electronic thermostat on the wall. Um, and we can get a rebate back from Idaho Power for going that way. And then actually from my computer or phone, I can adjust the temperature in any room in the building and stuff. Um, but that, I think down the road, another budget year or two before we kinda do that and stuff. But he did, um, get with me and what we wanna do in the mechanical room. So we know when the boiler's flamed out or we've had, uh, our lead leg pump switch or kickoff. Trying to get us some a little more advanced warning than it's cold in here or it's too hot, you know, we don't know things are off.
Well, and I think it's important to get the warning system to hit your phone that, hey, it just went out. We gotta move.
Cause we don't remember and still it's hard to check the loop temperature every day. Um, you know, we don't know that in the winter the boiler's gone out till the jail calls that, hey, it's getting cold in here, you know, or something. Um, when the boiler flames out and sometimes it just, I don't know, it, the older one, it would just, you know, it gets a gust of wind back down the flue. And, you know, blows the pilot out or something. Um, so, um, and we need to get our cooling tower working properly. It's, uh, there's, it's, it's got a sequence that goes. So generally when it goes on, the louvers open up outside. Uh, and then the pump kicks on, gets the water flowing through it and then, then the fan kicks on and, and... Years ago, something went wrong with the motor, some, there's some controls. So the louvers, you have to open them in the spring and close them in the winter with a pipe wrench. They're, um, needs to get, uh, back operating in the proper sequence and stuff. Also looking at possibly putting what's called VFD drive, buried frequency drive on it. Um, which is more efficient in power, uh, in power and just it works more efficiently. Um, very, and, um, looking at doing something like that down the road with it too. But, um, other than that, um, we're just going along. Um, our paving bid for the alleyway has gone through legal. So that will probably be coming up to sign that. And then for some reason Brad and I are having trouble getting, he says he sent me the bid several times for doing out here. But, um, I'm not getting it for some reason. But, um, as soon as I get that, we'll get it through legal and get it before we're signing and see if we can get the alleyway and lease this parking lot done.
You might wanna check your junk folder.
What's that?
Check your junk folder.
I, I went through my junk, I deleted, um, my other all, I've looked in all of the folders. And, um, I got the one for over here and he said it was attached to that, but, uh, I, um...
Didn't see it though?
Yeah.
And you got my email about the city doing the school leak out here in September, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, for, if they're doing this, they'll have all their, probably their equipment here. If that ends up who they have, uh, trying to track that leak down.
Will they grind that old pavement out? Is that how they're gonna do that? We know?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, when they're searching for it, they're gonna cut it and start digging, you know, how they're, you know, when they came and potholed it, you know, they, they cut the asphalt first. Um, uh, I'm not quite sure how they're gonna track that down.
You know, it goes.
Yep. And they're supposed to, with Tri-State, they've talked to Granite about fixing the parking lot over here. So plus whether out here we can get that, uh, where the asphalt sunk there from the lights, uh, get that, um...
We could use your on the plug, eh?
Yeah, mm-hmm, and stuff. So that's about all I've got. If you got any questions for me?
No, I can't think of any now. I'm sure I will, but I'll just send you a text by, don't find the answer.
Okay.
Um, oh, yeah, Alphan Nursery in the Lock Wall, is that happening this year?
It's supposed to be. We're supposed to be on the, uh, agenda for their agenda to do that. When I, uh, met Sue, we went and looked at, uh, the annex landscaping. Um, she thought, she thought by the end of this month, she'd have a crew freed up to start on it. So this month's quickly running out. So, um, yeah, it's on the agenda to get done this year.
Do you know, Scott, were they gonna fix just the leaning wall? Are they gonna do all of it?
Well, most all of it's gotta lean to it. So, um, I think they're looking at unstacking most, uh, all of it. They're supposed to do that, get that fixed. And then they're supposed to, um, install sprinklers. They're gonna bore under the sidewalk. So we can get rid of those hoses and stuff around the sheriff's office. And, uh, so we can irrigate the grass over there without, uh, those hoses and cones out there and stuff. That was all part of the bid, wall and that.
Well, and September's a pretty nice month to do that kinda work. So hopefully it'll be done.
Yeah, I think our first frost warning is not till the twenty-first or something. Watching that to try to keep our garden going.
Yeah.
So...
I'm sure, I think it was the eighteenth of September when it froze first at my house.
Yeah, I thought we got one in August out there where we got, cause we were at, uh, yeah, cause I missed the hazardous household waste. Cause we were a family reunion in California and we'd come back one day sooner, we'd, you know, save our garden, but... And didn't, so...
Okay, anything else for Scott?
There's enough, Scott. Thanks. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. So Doug, we got sixteen minutes till our next agenda. And you wanna mute us?
That's fine.
We'll see everybody back here at eleven o'clock.
Okay, welcome back everybody. This is our eleven o'clock agenda item. Um, we have some actions out here. So Jeff, at this time, come on up. And whatever you want to do first, mister.
Well, let's start with the easy one first. Uh, let's do that, uh, that four service.
Four service agreement.
What this is for services, taking out a culvert that's about ninety feet deep, putting a bridge in.
Ninety feet deep?
Ninety feet, yes.
That's a lot of material to move.
So I made sure they put in here enough money for me to hire a contractor. We don't, we'd be renting equipment and everything else. That's what this is. It's all broke down. I don't know if you get, you guys.
We got it. Is that, what was it, six eighty?
Yeah, it was almost seven hundred thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what this is. That'll, that'll trigger them to finish their financials on it. And then this winter, I'll, I'll put out a bid on it. And, and I've talked to Doug about this. We've, we've put this in our budget because we have to expend it before we get reimbursed for it. It's taken me five years, but I'm finally starting to figure it out.
And what, oh, this is on profile gap.
Profiles, yeah, it's about two, two miles from the top. First profile crossing is should come off the top.
This is for six hundred and eighty-five thousand, submitted quarterly. Okay, any questions for Jeff on this?
If I bid it out, the only thing I'll have to do is oversee it.
Hmm.
Which is fine. That'd be about a trip back there every couple of weeks.
And that's true. Does that replace a bridge or culvert? Culvert, that's what I thought, yeah. And the one that's in there now is just not adequate, is that?
Well, they're afraid of one tree plugging up the inlet.
Right.
And it'll make a heck of a mess. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion. We approve the road project agreement with Payette National Forest for the Profile Creek Road Bridge.
I'll second that.
Moved in second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Copy that Doug when I get all the signatures.
Today's date.
It is.
Profile Creek Bridge, Road Bridge.
Just your signature on there?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yep.
I don't know, Doug after the test?
Nope, didn't see it on there.
I didn't see it either. Okay, so that's done. What's next?
Joe's Road.
Okay, so you're gonna have to kind of bring us up to date on that. I know it's a private road in West Mountain.
It's a.
Public road.
Public right of way, which is a twenty foot right of way. Um, it was never constructed when they built Granton, Granton Bernard, thank you. Um, that subdivision over there is one of the little roads that they, they never built, but the right of way existed. Um, not knowing any better, after talking to Oki and some other people, it probably should have went a different direction, but I figured out construction and right of way permit, which is free. Um. Yeah, yeah. So after talking to our council, um, I got off the phone last week with our parametrics, our engineering firm. Um. Parametrics does not like it. Um, it's, there's a lot of stuff there that can get the county in trouble lawsuit wise.
Was it mainly drainage stuff or what?
Drainage, um, insurance. Um, that was the main thing. Um, I've talked to Craig many times over this. Um, I've stopped him, wanted to go ahead, stopped him again. Um, this time was a hard stop after talking to our council and parametrics. Needing to figure out what's going on. This should have actually went to, talking to Brian. It should have been more like a. Should have went in front of the public for hearings, public notices. It's a pretty major deal. A lot of trees had to come down. Um.
So like a, so all the neighbors could come in and say, hey, I'm worried about this or I'm worried about that.
It'd be like a planning and zoning hearing where they opponent, they proponent, you know, middle, whatever. Um.
Which is kind of a change in our old process where we just kind of let folks do their own thing and made sure that they use new culverts and not plastic culverts and that.
Right, yeah. Um, so that's what this discussion is gonna be about. Um, right now, the. Craig, I'm gonna call him the contractor, even though he says he's not the contractor, um, has been told to stop. Until we figure out what, what we need to do, the next step. Whether we leave it alone and go back to a public hearing, public notice type deal, or we let him go. He's already got. Most of the trees down, where do you go?
Over here. You're in the way. He's the commissioner.
Um, so yeah, our, our insurance should be, the insurance, he gave me the insurance, basically it was a. The equipment insurance. Um, it wasn't a million dollar liability certificate like I get from all the other contractors that work on our right aways. Um. Yeah, there's a lot of red flags in there that parametrics is. That if you, if you have just one person on that section of road, I'm not sure how many total there are that don't want it. You've, you, you could be in for some serious repercussions.
So Brian, what, are you thinking of a whole new system? Basically a public hearing kind of a deal on this, or can they do this with a neighborhood agreement or something like that?
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, let me, let me clarify. Um, the discussions that I've had with Jeff really are about developing a, a, a new process.
Okay.
That wouldn't necessarily apply to this project because Jeff's already issued the approach permit. So to change, to change the system or the procedure in the middle of a project really isn't, that, that's not good advice. And that's not the advice that I, I gave to him. Uh, so there, what is, I think that needs to be discussed here today is how, how the county is gonna work with these, these homeowners. And, and finish this project or, or do whatever you need to do with it. And then, and then for future projects. Uh, we should huddle up as, as the board and, and the road department and come up with a system that everybody is more comfortable with. I think what Jeff's hearing from the engineering company is can you actually build this road to the specifications? There are terms in, in a standard approach permit that says that you're gonna have to have, uh, financial assurances. There's a warranty. Uh, performance bond basically, as well as that any new roads need to be built to standard county standards. This is a twenty foot right of way. So there's some challenges with this project, as I'm sure there will be with others. Uh, but given the fact that we're kind of launched into this project, I think, uh, the, the, uh. Really the pressing issue is where do we go from here? Cause construction has started, uh, on this and is, is partially underway. And, uh, I did go out and visit the site with Jeff and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer, I don't build roads. But I certainly just, uh, from casual observation, it wouldn't be a good condition to leave, leave this in the condition that it's in. It needs, you know, some, some work needs to be done to make sure that you don't have major drainage issues or trees that, uh. Trees that have been, uh, partially taken down or, or impacted by the excavation that couldn't cause some property damage. So that's, that's kind of where, where I am at with this is, uh. You know, whatever I can do to help, help you all make, uh, wise, sound decisions on how to finish this project. And then I would like to, once this is behind us, uh, talk to the board about some ideas or some recommendations that I'll have for you to. Uh, maybe improve the process, uh, for next time.
And I think, you know, that's some of the minimum standards we'd have to put into developing these public right aways. Cause I think we're gonna see more of this. So we, we need to make the process pretty similar. I guess, and under the impression you guys are here for the same issue. So what I would like to do is first bring Craig up and see. Let him kind of explain what's going on. And you guys are allowed to talk about it, what your concerns are. See if we can't reach some kind of agreement today so that we can get the road done. That work? Or if you're totally against it, then we're gonna have a different issue. So Craig, why don't you come on up and kind of talk what, what's going on and where the rub is and we'll go from there.
That's Joe's Road, and it's a continuation. It's a county plotted road. It was plotted sixty years ago. When the subdivision was put in, uh, public right of way, public access. And I've got several emergency agencies that would like to see the road put in letters from the fire department. Uh, Patty Bowlin signed in as the sheriff. Um, Forest Service said they would like it, but unless it's, uh, structure protection or something like that, then, um. They can't really sign on. I haven't heard back from Idaho Power, but they said any access over there would be good. Due to Walters Lane where we, um, access it, there's over a hundred lots north of Walters Lane. We go up a steep grade, uh, probably eight to ten percent grade. With a sharp ninety degree turn to the left or to the right. And if you're on snow or ice up there and you stop, you're sliding backwards down the hill. I don't know how many people we pulled out of there with trailers and cars and. With over a hundred lots in there, if that gets plugged up, you're just about trapped in there. For fires or. Anything.
So where are you, or are you on it now? You've got all the trees out? Have you actually started?
Now, there's some more trees that need to come out. Jeff stopped me on that, which I'm kind of confused. I got the permit. It was go ahead and work. Then it was stop work. And it was go ahead and work. And then it was stop work. And it was go ahead and work. And then it was stop work. So I'm, you know, I'm kind of confused on this right now. Ben back here, he's got all the lots that border Joe's Road. On the west side, and he doesn't have any access to them. I mean, unless he comes up off Walters Lane and fishtails and builds roads up through there.
Hmm.
I mean, he doesn't have any access to his property right there.
So the road's tore up enough that people can't get in there? Is that what you're saying?
No, I've got it, I've got.
You got trees across it or what?
I've got it ribboned off what I did on Joe's Road there, so people wouldn't be going through there. We wanted to get some gravel on there to protect the. Vegetation and the sediment that's there, so it's not going anywhere. Keep the dust down. But, uh, seventy or eighty feet of the road probably is built on the south end of it. And I don't think anybody has any access to that, but Russ, and I think he uses that. Um, which it's a public right of way. It's a public road. It's twenty foot wide gravel road. I mean, it's. Pretty simple, straight gravel road, right up to West Mountain.
So what's the terrain like? What, what we've got for, and you talked about people being.
You have a little bit, you have a little bit of a pitch on it, but I'd say it's, uh, oh, it might. I haven't went up there and shot any grades on it, but I mean, it might fall a foot every, oh, ten feet or fifteen feet.
Probably in the six percent or so of.
No, not even that.
Not even that.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, I'd say more like a, maybe a three percent grade.
Is any other.
Get up to West Mountain Road.
Is any other obstacles to it like rocks or?
No, we're not, we're not planning on digging it up. We're planning on shaping what we have for the twenty feet.
Okay, yeah.
Putting gravel over it, mine tailings, getting that packed down and then topping it with three quarter road mix, as we have the money. It's all property owners that are just chipping in for this. I'm not a contractor.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got about ten or twelve people over there that have chipped in on this.
So we got adequate right of way, twenty foot adequate on there. Is that considered adequate?
Well. What all the other roads over there are.
It's, that's standard there.
Over there, yes.
Right. Okay. I mean, that's what all the roads are.
A lot of that was put in way before planning and zoning even existed.
Yeah, right.
Guy by the name of Nolte Allen is the one that actually developed that with Bernard Grattan.
Right.
Sixties and early seventies.
And I mean, if we can't build it, can the county build it? I mean.
Well, I think it's great that you guys got together and decided to fix your own problem. I think that's a solution to.
We've maintained.
I guess my concern is where's the rub? And that's where we're gonna find out, I'm assuming here today, is what's, what's the issue? What's going to go down?
Right, well, I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna find out.
So.
Is there, um, any issue with any drainage culverts, that kind of stuff?
I don't think there's that much of an issue because it's not that steep a grade. I mean, I worked at Stibnite for three years building drill pads and plowing and. All that stuff. I was a lead operator up there and, um, the water comes down off the hill before we even opened it up. And Bill dug a ditch on the upside of Walters Lane there, which never used to be there, to keep from. to keep from, um, rushing out across the road and going down Joe's Road. But, I mean, Jeff, I think he's got the right idea, 12 inch culvert and let it go down Walters Lane, tip the road, so the water goes down a ditch, goes out into the forest service.
So I think where the rub coming is we didn't have this professionally engineered to say, yeah, you need a 12 or a 15 inch or a six inch. We don't know for sure what size culvert. Some of those kind of issues are the things that engineers kind of would help us with on that. What I'm concerned about Jeff is I don't want to make it so expensive that private owners won't want to do it.
So what? You want me up there?
Yeah, you gotta come to the mic so everybody can hear on.
There's got a couple of them, yeah.
So I've met with Craig out there. So he, he's going to put a ditch in on the uphill side of the new Joe's Road. Bathe the water down to Walters, underneath Walters, or underneath Joe's Road, sorry. But then from there, that's my question is where's it going to go?
The water.
The water. Like Craig said, it's going to go where it always went. It just kind of runs down the road and it just kind of filters out, but I don't know if it goes on, under private ground. None of those roads have ditches unless somebody's put them in in the last 20 years. Water's always kind of went where it went, but we're.
Usually goes right down the center of the road.
Usually, but it doesn't on our road now. I mean, from Joe, from Walters Lane down, we had a bunch of people chip in for gravel and, um, Bill took his grading tractor in there and, I mean, it's beautiful. One of the best roads on West Mountain.
But we're going to add a little more water to it. That's where parametrics is a little worried. There's a lady that, I don't know, I haven't met the other lady that lives down below you folks down on Walters, I think her name was Charlotte.
That's me.
That's you.
Oh, that's you, sorry. Well, now I've met you. She's, she lives kind of right where the water left Joe's Road or left Walters and kind of went off the side. Legally, we can't take public water off our roads and dump it on the private property. But that's the way all these roads over there were kind of, I'm not going to say designed, but, um, there is one lot, I'm assuming this is.
Yes.
Oh, you've been, okay.
Four lots.
I, I looked at that triangle of lots there and there's one of those lots addressed off of Joe's Road. The other ones are Walters.
Off Walters.
West Mountain or.
No way it can be like that.
Yeah, look on the accessory map.
You've got double lots right there.
And go look on the accessory map. There's one lot right in the middle addressed off of Joe's Road.
Hey, well, let's, let's, you can have a seat Craig, let's go back. Charlotte, do you want to come up and tell us what your guys' concern is? We can nail this down to something pretty simple, maybe?
Um, yeah. My name is Charlotte Howarth, owner of, for over 40 years of the property at the corner of Joe's Road and Walters Lane, 652 Joe's Road. I would like to respond to the email that was sent to me by Cindy Herrick, because I had sent an email to you and then she responded. This is what I received from her. I do understand that there is a permit that has been issued to Craig Derrick. I also know that the conditions of that permit have not been followed and that removal of trees and ripping out of vegetation was started before any of the conditions of said permit were allowed or adhered to. Not everyone on Joe's Road were allowed, or excuse me, not everyone on Joe's Road were told of the proposed extension of the road to West Mountain. Foremost, the property owners most impacted by that, the owners being Russ and Kathy Poole and Linda Lee Clark. These properties directly abut the extension. I was told by Craig Derrick on June 24th that the road was plotted and that it was permitted and that it was going through. And I expressed my opposition at that time. I don't feel it's necessary. I feel that the proper way to have handled this is a written letter to the property owners most impacted by this extension from the Valley County Planning and Zoning with a written way to voice our opposition. I also understand that it is a plotted road since 1956. That being said, the conditions of the permit that was issued should be followed. That's what's decided. Also, the removal of trees and the digging should not have been permitted before any of that on the permit was okayed. In conclusion, I would like the commissioners to know that I am upset and I'm sorry that I'm upsetting Craig and my neighbors, but I feel that it was really not approached correctly. There should have been a posted public sign saying that this was going to be done. And that way we could have done writtenly, written it what we were opposed to rather than have to stand here and complain.
So you weren't notified at all until you started seeing vegetation get?
I knew, Craig had told me that he had a permit. I figured we didn't have enough money to put a road in. I don't see a reason for the road. Nobody's had any problems in this 40 years that I've been there of making a 90 degree turn off of Walters Lane. Basically it's, it's a road that is going to increase traffic, dust, kids riding around on four wheelers, making dust. I mean, I just, why not maintain Walters Lane? I've slid down Walters Lane and I want to tell you it's more than a 3% grade. It's probably closer to 15. All roads on West Mountain go uphill. I don't know what to say, either uphill or downhill. So, I mean, you're going to have a diff, you're going to have two roads basically that are going to be maintained.
So what can we do to solve your problem? What can we do to fix it?
Walters Lane should be improved at the corner, at the top where you enter onto West Mountain Lane or West Mountain Road.
And not?
I mean, you're making the same kind of turn. In fact, it's a 40 degree angle up Joe's Road. You're trying, you can only go to one direction. If you try to go to the right, you ain't going to get it done. Cause you're going to have to have a great big wide road. Why not just improve Walters Lane? All the snow and everything has been going on my lot for over 40 years and, uh, we've seen to handle it. If you put a culvert above Joe's Road, you're basically going to have water going down to Walters Lane, which is going to affect the roads that are going, uh, Dutch's Road that goes north and south. So, I mean, at that point you're going to be putting in a lot of culverts. And I realize these are dirt roads. I understand that. But I, I just feel that it was approached very wrongly. Thank you.
Well, I'm not quite sure how to solve this one. I think, uh, hate to start, stop process or proj, project in the middle of it. Um, is there any way you could come down just to her lane and then stop? I mean, I don't, I don't know those roads out there. I was going to go and look this weekend, but I didn't get it done. Or do we want to go back and have a public hearing and open this back up? Or do we want to get neighbors to sign a, some kind of a permission thing? Normally everybody gets kind of along and everybody gets what they want and it solves everybody's problems and that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah. Uh, Joe's Road basically tees. Walters Lane comes down off of West Mountain.
Comes straight off down.
Joe's Road goes straight down. I've slid down both roads.
The only road I'm familiar over there is teepee. I had a friend.
Yeah, and that's below us, that's quite a ways below us. You know, it, it's just a tee, basically. The road's never been through these vacant lots. So, you know, I, I understand it's a plotted road. I do understand that. I do understand that it needs to be done correctly. I would prefer that it wasn't done, improve the corner at Walters Lane. Improve my corner if you want to. I mean, your, my property's already, my pin goes in the middle of the road. So they're already using part of my property to make a 90 degree turn. So, I mean, I understand why they want it done. And it's a nice straight shot, straight up to plow and everything else, but, um, it's a long ways down when you're going fast too. It's a straight shot if it's slick, so, you know? And I, I have traffic, and we all have traffic on those roads, a lot of it. And it's, it's, um, if you increase the distance that they can pick up speed, you're going to have a lot more speed in front of your house. And I already, they come around that corner and they're going at least 15 and by the, past my house, they're going 20.
Yeah, so there's been an issue up here with?
Yeah, it's always been.
Travel roads, you pave them and then they go faster.
Yeah, so, and I mean, yes, our road is taken care of very nicely. Craig has always taken care of that road. Bill has done an excellent job of grading it. I don't see the need for Joe's Road, that's my problem.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, and I'm only one vote on this board, is I would be willing as a county to, to pay for the extra culvert or parts and pieces that we need to fix this so that we can get this done. I think that's appropriate, but Brian, should we go back and start over with a public hearing? I mean, you kind of stated that you didn't want to stop this in the middle.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to require a public, I mean, public hearing is a planning tool.
Right.
This is the kind of thing that you do before you make a decision, not after a permit is issued. So unfortunately, you know, we didn't have a chance to huddle up about that before this permit was issued, so I don't think it's going to help or solve necessarily this one, but maybe for the future, we need to consider that. And it's going to require some ordinance changes. An approach permit is a very informal process where, um, that authority has been granted to the superintendent of the road department for, uh, for the issuance of those permits and there is no hearing that's legally required there. So, you know, I, I wouldn't try to reinvent the wheel, uh, through this mid, through this middle part of this process, but, um, I, I think that we haven't heard from the engineers, just Jeff's, um, Jeff's, um, summary of what their concerns are. It may be wise for us to get a more formal, uh, input from, from them about what they would recommend from an engineering standpoint and how to build this road so it's built correctly, safely and minimizes the external impacts on, on the surrounding neighborhood.
Jeff, can you tell us kind of just off the coffee head, is it a steepness issue or is it a drainage issue or is it all of that?
Mainly the drainage issue with the engineering company. So we got to be very careful on putting public money.
I know that. I think that in this case, we, we got the cart in front of the horse, so we may have to help so that we can finish this project out. And I'm willing to do that just because I appreciate the fact that private folks are putting their own time and energy and effort into this. We just got to design a better system so that everybody's protected if things come apart.
Do we want to hire an engineering company to come in and do a drainage plan?
What kind of money are we talking about for something like that, you know?
I have no idea. I'm, I'm thinking timeline.
Yeah, that's, that's going to push this into being too late.
It might push these guys into November, I don't know. It might be simple, cut to the bone, go get the water under here, take it down to the corner. Thing is, there's no ditches in there. So wherever we take the water, ditch is going to have to go down Dutch's or down some other road to bypass all this private property.
Okay, so I need, I need to ask a couple of questions. To everybody, you know, it's our way, it seems like what I've heard is we've got some objections and I'm not quite sure. We have one piece that, look, we got enough road there, we just need to improve it. And we got another side says we need to build it. We need to get this road done. It's, uh, are there any, are there any, is there any middle ground in that? And I, I, I guess I'm trying to understand the road and I've not seen any diagrams. I don't see any kind of anything that tells me what that looks like without going out there and looking at it. And then I'm hearing that there's a drainage thing. Is there no solutions, I mean, local solutions to the drainage thing? I mean, somebody out there that's building must have an idea. You know that you're going to dump water, so what's going to happen to it? You know, I mean.
It's going to go right where it always has.
Yeah, is it going to make, is it going to change anything?
It's just going to add a little bit more water to it.
Is, can that be mitigated?
Well, by putting ditches, ditches in and culverts and getting the water past all this private property to dump down onto the.
So what does that take to do that, Jeff?
I haven't looked that far down the, down the roads.
Yeah, in other words, it seems like as we're doing this, somebody ought to know what that's going to do. I mean, obviously the people building it's got to know. So, yeah, I mean, and I'm, I'm hearing O'Brien say, well, we shouldn't start, just jump in and just stop this effort. And like, uh, Mr. Hasbrook just said, we, we'd like to encourage that help from the neighbors as well to resolve these things. But you don't want to go, kind of got to somehow get all our heads together and go, well, where do we go with this?
That's where we're at.
And if we stop it and we realistically go in an engineering thing, it's going to be next year.
Yeah, and see my, my, my issue is I'm not an engineer.
Meanwhile, you got all this.
Everybody says that these days.
I'm not an engineer. Where's all the damn engineers?
I mean, if I, if I go over there, walk all the roads and say, okay, let's ditch here, culvert here, ditch here, culvert here, and that doesn't work, I don't have a stamp that said that's going to work and the county's going to get sued over it.
So when you go back to the history of these roads, that's the way they've all been done. Essentially, so you're not really changing anything in that regard.
No, but we have the power.
Now we have, you know, this.
We have engineers that.
Yeah, so.
Control our decisions most of the time.
So, uh, you said you're working with parametrics on this and they're the ones that?
I haven't worked, I just had a couple.
Just had a talk with them?
Stations with parametrics.
Can we get, get them up here and walk this?
That's what I'm thinking is getting ahold of them and see if they could get up here
In a timely manner.
Do a drainage plan for this whole road. And I don't know, I guess we'll probably get stuck with that bill, I'm assuming, but Craig, when you're building the road, are you putting any borrow pits in or are you just coming in and putting more stuff on the old road?
Well, we, we got stopped right now. We're planning on ditching about six inches down one side and throwing that out, putting a nice crown in the road. We're going to tuck it up with mine tailings and as we, we have the money, we're going to put three quarter road mix on it. And make it a nice gravel road.
So if we come back and there's a, a pond next spring in their front yard, you guys could come back and put in more culverts and more drainage to solve their issue.
Charlie already gets a pond right down there by our shop. We don't plan on.
I flooded the whole time. I got river going down my property, but, um.
This could help it.
Could, this could help it.
I doubt that. The water will run down Walters Lane into the other, um, properties below me because that, once it's ditched, we ditched where Joe's Road, a couple of years ago, because all the road, you know, like I said, it runs down the center of the road. We ditched from a partway up Walters Lane down and got the road, got the, you know, runoff to run down the road. Of course, it runs down the road. It puddles right there at the end of Dutch's Lane and, uh, Walters Lane. You know, they're, they're roads. I mean, that's what they are. You know, they were put in by cats in 1956 when they first, they took a cat through and knocked down trees. I just think, I just think it's an unnecessary road.
Well, and I can understand your argument about, I don't want them roads because they get more traffic and more people and more stuff, but that happens everywhere. And I think that's kind of a weak argument, to be honest with you, because one of the things a nice road does is allows that fire truck to get in there, that ambulance to get in there sometimes of the year over there, not all the time, because it is pretty steep below that.
You need to look at that corner, man.
But I think, I think that's kind of a weak argument as far as it's, I don't want more traffic or more deaths, that's impossible to stop.
Yeah.
But, um, I would be willing, like I said, as a county to say, okay, well, let's get an engineer to come in and do a drainage plan, because I don't want to flood somebody's house out. And you don't want to either, because they're going to come back on you, Craig, as well.
I, I don't want to flood anybody out. I'm just trying to make it better for all my neighbors and friends.
But it's going to delay your project.
Can we have a couple proponents throw in there?
Well, sure, if there's somebody else who wants to speak to this, come on up to the mic. Come on to the mic and all I need is your, all I need is your name and your hometown. I don't need your address, just for the record.
Ben Payne Caldwell, Idaho.
Thank you.
And, uh, it was already suggested, but I've got lots on the other, on Joe's Road that I need to get into too. That's all I wanted to say. I've got four lots on that side of that Joe's Road that I can't access into right now.
Do you have a drainage or any water problems from many of these roads?
Um, they put some, somebody put, uh, a drainage in down right, let's see, right after Bing's Road when they started, there's a little drainage down there, but that's about it. That's what I got on my property. I own that whole triangle, so.
Hey, anybody else? Come on up.
We live where Joe's Road meets West Mountain Road.
We live where Joe's Road meets West Mountain Road.
Okay. And your name, sir?
Russ and Kathy Poole. She's had an emergency. I couldn't be here. I just, okay. We've owned our property for 13 years. Live at this address six months of the year. Many issues with the permitting of the extension of Joe's Road. First, there has been no need for this road for 60 years. Why now? Very few are in favor of it. Reasons given to the county for the extension make no sense. They want it for emergencies. I wonder if we could look up how many emergency calls they've had. Walters Road and Waterline, about West Mountain Road at 90 degrees. Joe's Road will be a blind corner at 45 degrees. When you come up Joe's Road, you cannot make a right turn without crossing both lanes of traffic. And if you have a trailer, it'd be impossible. Walters Lane has the best vision both directions. Joe's Road extension will be steep and narrow, and it will be quite doubtful that any emergency vehicles would use it as Walters Road is wider. Traffic will be increased significantly along with the dust erosion, loss of safety for property and people. We were not notified of the request for the permit by the Valley County. No public hearing or notice. Neighbor Craig Derrick showed up one morning, said he had a permit to put the road through and was looking for support. We advised him that we would not do that. He never stated a start date. We sought information from the road department on the situation and were advised that three different times that there was no permit issued. At that time, I was down trying to stop Craig because I said, there's no issue or permit. And he says, I have a permit. I said, well, show it to me. He wouldn't show it to me. Finally, after three times, then didn't get him stopped. And I said, would you just stop until I talked to Jeff? No, he wouldn't do that. So finally, he admitted he couldn't find his permit. He began destruction of the area properly two weeks after. He approached to discuss what he was doing. Craig advised he had a permit with no expiration date. When asked to see it, he advised that he didn't know where it was. Later that day, Craig advised he didn't even think he would finish the road this year. Jeff McFadden was called and later advised he had issued a permit back in October of 21. And it was during COVID and he said he had forgot all about it. Jeff arrived at approximately 2:00 PM and shut Craig down because he had not followed the requirements of the permit. Upon review of the permit, it was quite apparent Craig had not com- applied with any of the requirements identified, including notifying the road department of his intent to begin work. In the rules, it says he has to give them five days' notice before he begins construction. To our knowledge, Craig has not returned the original signed dated permit back to the county with all the required documents required. County is asking him to do this 10 months after issuance. Was no pre-work meeting. Road department didn't even know he had started construction until I called them. No engineer was involved, no schedule submitted, no drainage plan, no performance bond, no insurance. Did not notify all of the affected parties prior to his activities. Craig is determined to put this road extension through, but he has shown that he has no regard for any of the requirements of the permit. Respectfully request that this permit be rescinded and not reissued to him in the future due to his lack of compliance.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. A couple of questions. How do we handle, like Ben just came up and said, well, this is going to access three more of my lots?
I can see what Ben would want access. He's got two accesses already built off of Walters. So he can access his property through, off of Walters.
Off of Walters, okay. So what do you want to do here? Bill? Oh, yeah. Come on up. Sorry. He did have his hand. I'm sorry.
I'm Bill Hendricks. I live down on Joe's Road. I've been there for three, four years. I've worked on Joe's Road. I've worked on Walters Lane, putting gravel on and getting drainage properly. You know, on a, on a road, you want the uphill side, have a ditch and drain, which is pretty obvious for anybody that knows what road building is. I did that to Walters Lane. So Walters Lane tips back into the hill. It drains all the way down. It goes clear to the lake, which is the way it had drained, but there was some flat spots, so it had come across the road. So I got the road tipping all right, got it all going to the lake. Joe's Road, the same thing. On the upper side of Joe's Road, we have a ditch, runs all the way down, goes to the deal. Well, I'm one of the people that I have a hard time making that corner on Walters Lane. It's a really tight corner. There's a telephone pole over here and a, and a phone box over here. And when you go to turn around that corner with the trailer, it's tight and you have to go over onto her property, just even get to it, Charlie's property, okay, to get around that corner with the trailer. It's really steep up at the, up at West Mountain Road, Walters Lane is. I mean, it's like this. It's probably an eight or nine percent. The grade that's going up the road right now is going to be about a three or four percent. And it comes right out on the road and the one fellow's right. If, as it looks right now, yeah, you'd only be able to go to the left, but Ben owns this property on the right. And we're going to make a nice little swing around to the right so that you can pull up and have a nice approach and be able to see both ways and get up on West Mountain Road without sliding back down the hill. As far as the water coming off of that, that whole mountain lays like this. It ran onto West, onto Walters Lane ever since, you know, God created it. All that water that's on that hill runs to Walters Lane. Now all we're doing is the, this side of the crown's going to go below the road. This side of the crown is going to stop and it'll run it down straight to the road. A culvert under the road, Joe's Road on the upside of Walters would carry that water down. And if you wanted to get it all the way out, the next road, obviously, they didn't put a culvert in. It should have one. It's, you know, but a lot of the roads up there don't. But it should have a culvert on the next road. And that would take care of any water that came off of there. It tips it away from Charlie's house, so there's no way it's going to Charlie's house. It's going to stay on that side of Walters Lane, go down, go right to the Forest Service. My thing is, I, I feel like it, it's a right of way to my property that I can get straight down in there easily with a trailer on. I have a hard time and, and it's steep. I, I have a backhoe over there and I pulled out probably five or six people just last winter on Walters Lane where they come off of West Mountain. If you try to come down the steep part, you slide off over into the trees. If you try to go the shallow place and go around and come this way, it's tips like this and you run into the telephone box. And you can look at both those telephone boxes on that road. They've been hit every year, two or three times. It's just a poor place for a trailer and it's a really a poor approach going off of Walters Lane. And the other one will be, it's just a nice even grade all the way up. It's going to be a really nice road when it's dumped.
Hey, thank you, sir. Okay, a couple of questions, Craig. You knew that there was supposed to be an engineer's report and a drainage report and all that stuff on this permit?
Well, when I started out, I talked to Jeff at the liquor store over here. He was getting a soda or something. Larry Waller is the old mayor. I asked Jeff if he had any feedback on Joe's Road. And I kind of considered that a meeting. I'm thinking a 20-foot wide gravel road. Engineer's report? No, I didn't get that because Jeff told me a 12-foot culvert should work right there at Walters Lane and Joe's Road. So I took it at that and we got the 12, or 12-inch culvert out there. And we got stopped before we could put that in. As for the insurance, I had insurance with David Blood on the excavator, but that wasn't good enough. So Jeff sent me a sample from granite, which I'm not sure how good that is, but it gives me all granite's information. So I did talk, talk to Mike Gurney up in McCall. Jeff said, this is what we need for liability insurance. And Mike Gurney at Farmers in McCall, he said, why, I don't quite understand this. He said, why a liability insurance? He said, why not a bond? He said, a liability insurance is going to be $8,000 to $10,000. A bond's going to be $500 to $1,000. So I said, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not an insurance guy, Mike. And so that's kind of where I'm at with that, you know? I mean, it was go, stop, go, stop. Okay, got everything stopped.
Well, and I can understand that because it's, the world has changed. When you and I were younger, we just went and did stuff like this. You know, there's too much liability to your road project. And I think you need to protect yourself from that liability. That's why the insurance or the bond.
And which I did with David Blood's insurance. I'm on the excavator up in there.
But that is that liability for, if the excavator falls off a truck or is that liability?
Well, I rode it from his house right up through my front yard.
I mean, if you build a road and it floods somebody out, I don't think that's the right kind of insurance.
Well, and evidently it's not, but from what I understood from Jeff, it was. So that's, he told me that's what it needed and I've got it on email for insurance.
So what about the engineer's drainage report? Wasn't that on the permit?
It says something on there about engineering. It says something on there about engineering. But I've got emails with Jeff. Jeff said, 12-inch culvert right here is probably about all you can really do, which is Walters Lane and the continuation of Joe's Road. So we got a 12-inch culvert put in there and then we got stopped from putting that in.
I think we're going to need that engineer's report just to protect you guys from building this road. I don't know what that's going to cost. My guess, my feeling right now is this, let's make, let's shut it down. No more work. Get an engineer's report for a drainage plan, clear to pass all the private land ownership. And then we'll see what that is, how much that's going to cost. But I don't know how we can proceed any further. Our liability is too huge without it.
Okay. Well, right now, we can't proceed too much further other than putting the pipe in and a couple of loads of gravel, because that's all the money we've got from people that chipped in.
Well, and if you're going to take a couple of years to do this, I think this engineer's report should state that, okay, this is mixture's planned. It's put these culverts in and you're talking about a road on the one side that doesn't have a culvert that, you know, all that's got to be considered in. Otherwise, somebody's going to get flooded out and you guys are going to get.
Right. I don't think anybody's going to get flooded out.
I hope not. I hope not.
I mean, we pretty much take care of that winter times, you know, year round, plow in the snow and everything.
I think, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's got to be done more professionally now, Craig. I mean, you've got to have these steps in the permit. These are the things we require of it so that everybody's protected, including the county. And until that happens, I don't see how we can proceed with any more work.
Okay, well, I guess.
That's my feeling.
Yeah. Well, I guess it'll sit like it is. And can Joe use it right now? Is it, or Ben?
I don't know.
As it is to get to his lots?
I don't know the road. I can't tell you that. It's a right of way, so I'm assuming anybody can go through there, but
I mean, we don't want to dust anybody out, Russ or Charlie or anything. And it's just, it's dust right now. It's talcum powder going up through there. So, I mean, that's.
It's dry topsoil right now, is what you're saying.
And that's going to turn to muck in the spring, so it's going to be really tough. When it gets wet.
And the engineer, and who pays for that if we're being forced to?
Well, see, that's part of the permit of doing that is to get the engineer's report, get the liability insurance and.
And I, I emailed Jeff and I asked him, do we have to use the county's engineer?
Oh, you could hire your own engineer. But I'm willing as, as the county to say, hey, we'll help you cover some of those costs because you guys are trying to do a nice thing. And I think in the long run, it's going to turn out great. We have issues of liability between them and now and then. And I think we need to make sure that you're covered liability-wise if that road blows out and you're going to muck slide down.
And I don't want to do anything to put the county in jeopardy either.
And I appreciate that. Brian, can you think of anything else we need?
I think that insurance more covers, if a tree falls the wrong way, all in somebody's house.
Oh, for taking trees out?
They're digging in the road.
Dig up a power line and dig up a, whatever, somebody's sewer.
But everybody's, all the contractors, I get about 20 of them a year every January. And it's just letting us know that they, if they do do work on a county right of way, they're, they've got that million dollar license certificate.
And we don't have that, correct?
You do not have that with Craig.
And so I think that's another requirement.
But I'm not an insurance guy either, like Craig. I mean, I, I looked at the certificate he gave me. I was like, oh, yeah, you know, it's covered, but looking closer, the machine's covered than the operator, but I don't know about surrounding.
Right. I think it's the wrong kind of coverage.
So Commissioner Hasbrook, a couple of comments. We started this issue, or at least we were part of starting an issue here that's happening right now and it's in progress. And it seems to me like there's some stopgap solution in there that allows Craig to move at least to his obligation he's got to his community to get at least some money spent and do some improvement there, you know, and I.
I'd at least like to get the, the topsoil covered up.
I'm concerned about just stopping it, you know? In other words, I don't think it's appropriate for us to stop what's happening right now. However, Jeff, I do think that we ought to do some, have at least some input to two or three things. One, grade, culvert and drainage. And now that doesn't absolve us of any, any kind of liability and may even add some to it. However, it doesn't sound to me like that what they're doing is likely to, I mean, likely to change too much from what we experienced in the past. In other words, it's not a Highway 55 type project. And I think that going forward though, we ought to have some kind of a plan in place that we get through our engineers to kind of polish this project up. Maybe not this year, but at least get them through this stage that they're in right now without just leaving a mess.
I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate if, if you guys got a chance, if you could just come over and look at it.
And that'd be another really good thing because I can't see that from here.
I could have brought a bunch of big eight by 10x photographs. I could have brought a bunch of big photographs, but I figured it'd be better if you guys had a chance to go over and look.
Anyway.
I mean, like Craig said, if, if we are halting it for right now, we're going to start getting fall rains here in a month.
Yeah.
And that is going to turn to a pile of goo.
Well, could we go ahead and gravel what he's done now?
It would be better. You could even just put a, just a skim coat of rich tailings or something on that, just.
We'd like to at least cut the ditch up to high side.
Yeah, you'll get it.
Get the pipe put in and.
As with six inches of topsoil, eight inches of topsoil.
Oh, yeah, it's going to be.
Tell what, we had slides this weekend from the embers in the back country. I, I don't know.
Anyway, I'm not, that's why I'm, I'm in favor of at least kind of wrapping up this section that we, we allowed. You know, we're, we have some responsibility there. So we need to get that at least wrapped up so that we don't create more of a problem by just dropping it, you know?
And I really think the issue here is we issued the permit with all these requirements, but the requirements didn't quite get done before you started.
Well, from what I.
That's probably our fault and your fault a little bit, but I'm not trying to blame anybody.
I think it's a 50/50 deal. I mean, I think there were some misunderstandings with Jeff with the permit and some with me with the permit. Thinking what Jeff said for granted and Jeff using what I gave him for insurance and all that. And I think it was kind of a 50/50 mix-up between the two of us.
You know, we're going to do a better job next time. You got your hand up?
I would like to say something.
Sure, come on up.
I can tell you right now that gravel is not going to solve your problem with the dirt. When my husband was still alive and we fixed that corner around Joe's Road and Walters Lane, he probably put in eight loads of that great big rock to stabilize that corner. You put gravel on that dirt and it's just going to disappear is what's going to happen. I, you're going to need some kind of base. I mean, it's just going to be a dirt path is basically what it'll be. I would like to know what the cost is going to be. I, I understand. I know that rock and gravel and all that stuff is expensive.
No, you're saying the cost to you or?
I'm pretty sure that the people that are interested in putting this road through do not have enough money to cover what they're going to need to do this road to make it stable. I mean, I don't know how much money that's going to cost. I'd like to know what the cost would be, you know? Because if we're asked to put money in on this and people have denied and said no, some people have given three hundred dollars, um, probably not gonna cover a whole lot of gravel.
So, can I ask you this question? One thing, one of the things is it apparently is a platted road, so.
Yeah, it's a platted road.
It, it, you know, we, from that standpoint, you know, it seemed like that they have a right to at least explore, you know?
I agree, I agree, but it needs to be done correctly.
And as far as, I just wanna create more problems for you downstream. One, and that's why I'd say we don't just probably leave it like it is.
Yeah, we do not wanna leave it like it is.
Yeah, and so.
But the way it is and putting just a load of gravel on it is not gonna solve.
Probably not, but that's gonna be the future. And that's what I suggested, we have to get a pro, get something going there where we look at what we want the final project to look like.
Yeah.
But meanwhile.
And that road will be used, it'll be used as it is, with just gravel.
Seems like we're in the process of kinda making some changes. And I apologize if it bothers, you know, you guys downstream, but hopefully by looking at this, we can mitigate that.
Yeah, and I hope this doesn't happen again to somebody else. Like you said, there should've been a public notice that that road was even an option, you know? Because a lot of people did not know it was plotted. I've known for years it was plotted. But, you know, there's never been a road there, never been anything there. So, anyway.
This is an action item, Ed, so we really need a motion to kinda set the base. Yeah, we're kinda running out of time, but if you can make it quick, please, we got some more stuff coming.
I know how to cure it. Ben earlier had offered to donate the land for a road to me. And I also thought.
To you, I didn't, not to you.
Yeah, you told me.
I'm not donating land, I never did tell you I was gonna donate land to you.
And he could put it on his own property and make it a private lane for his access.
I think the road would have to stay on where the right of way was surveyed in the beginning.
Yeah, that's.
That's a, that's a separate deal between you and Ben, that's, that's not relevant.
I was told they cannot use that road until it's totally completed.
I don't know where that came from, sir, but, yeah. I think what we have here is people that don't want a road at all because they don't want more folks in there, and that's impossible to stop, you know? It's a platted right of way, they have the right to build a road to their lots, especially if you've got three lots that you can't even get to, that seems to make sense. But I'm gonna go ahead then and make a motion that we authorize to do work on the road, to gravel it, to make it safe, to get it through the winter months. And then we'll come back next spring and let's look at the permit again and talk about an engineer's report and a drainage report and make this a legitimate permit. Does that work?
Yep.
Second?
So right now, it's not driving all the way through. There's one big red fur藤.
In the middle?
It's got a damaged root on it. I don't know if it's one of the main roots or not. I don't know if Craig thinks it's a major root or not, but.
You think that should come out?
The road has not completely been brushed out.
Oh.
Oh, geez. Somebody could, somebody could drive through there, but I mean, if.
We could get a car through there, it'd be tough to plow it or anything else.
Yeah.
But I have talked to Rex Chapman about.
Taking that tree out?
Taking that tree out and following a couple of trees.
So you're, you're feeling like they should be able to do that tree?
He said, I'm not, I'm not climbing anymore. And I said, well, if we gotta tie it off, I'll put a ladder up and cable it off, you can cut it.
That, that one tree's, it's.
Well, we get, I guess we're getting a discussion ahead of the vote here, but.
So you're gonna stop construction, but let him put some gravel on it, is that?
No.
No, no more trees?
If you take the tree out, will they be able to go on down to the full length of the rest of the road?
No, there's still a dozen trees probably. Looks like Idaho Powers got three or four marked when they were coming out. But I don't know if those are on Ben's property or the right of way.
You'd, you'd be able to get through there, it just wouldn't be twenty feet wide.
Right, so my, Mr. Chairman, my understanding, the second is to make sure that we accomplish what the original intent of this agreement that Jeff has made with Craig, right? So, I don't know, I, I think the trees are some, I mean, that's, that's part of it. And that's what I'd, I'd say that we were allowing. In other words, the original intent of what you had when you worked with them, Jeff, on getting this done. So in that case, I will second your motion for that, and then we could work semantics out.
So basically, what we're saying is to gravel the dirt that you got there now, make it safe so we don't lose the road next spring. That's my biggest concern, is all this going everywhere. And then you're gonna be held liable for that. So we gotta make sure you tighten that up. I don't know about the rest of these trees. To me, if you got a road halfway in and there's trees in the way, we're gonna have to wait until you get permitted and rebonded and all that stuff.
There's seventy or eighty feet of Joe's Road coming off West Mountain Road that's kinda basically already built.
That was built by the previous owner of the property I have.
To get access in your property, right?
Right.
Yep. Nice.
So how much, how much more is left to take out in trees and more dirt and all that stuff? A lot?
Really not much, really no dirt at all, other than just putting a bar ditch down the side.
A little bit of dirt needs to be moved. It needs to have a ditch on the uphill side, and that'll go on the lower side, a little touch and out.
How many feet, how many feet are we talking?
Uh, the whole road's only three hundred feet, four hundred feet.
Well, it's three hundred and fifty feet total, but minus that seventy or eighty feet, gives you.
Not that much, yeah.
Two hundred and seventy feet, seventy-five feet.
That still has to have the trees taken out and all that.
No, that's ready, except for a little bit of ditch work and, except for about. Maybe the dirt work, correct, trees taken out.
I don't know what to do here now.
Anyway, no, I, I think we're on the right track personally. I just think the whole point early on was to get it punched through that three hundred and fifty feet, right? And I mean, if that's all part of it, and that safely can be done without creating environmental hazard and various stuff like that, why not have that done? I mean, that's.
Just make it, make it safe enough that it's not gonna blow out next spring with all the water and everything's soft and muddy.
You made a motion, you have a second, Mr. Chairman, so.
Hey, we got a motion and a second.
Hold favorite, please say it.
I, I, motion carries. But I'm really serious about next year, when you come back to finish this road, you gotta have permits, you gotta have the storm engineering report. We gotta get this up to what the permit requires you to do. Okay?
Yep.
All right, we're done.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, even though it is lunch hour. Um, this is a no action item. This is a discussion on no business road. Jay, you wanna come up or to the mic?
I got three of us.
And we gotta try and make this quick if we can.
I hope so.
Try and get to your points pretty quick.
Uh, Jay, Jake's Donlin, Mark Stacy, Donlin.
Mike Cunliffe, Boydian Donlin.
Mark and Mike.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, what's your last name?
Cunliffe.
East Cunliffe, Skull.
C U N L I F F E.
Thank you.
Hey, so I'm kind of under the understanding that you got kinda the new updated MOU, and you had some issues with it, I assume?
Oh, uh, well, the one that I submitted, uh, I did have to make a minor change, but, uh, the one that I submitted is good. I will say, uh, last year, what happened was, the one that I submitted, you signed, and we were good to go. And then it came out later that, uh, it changed. And I never get a copy of that, I asked for it several times. So there were two signed copies out there originally, not go away, there was no issue, so.
And the change was you had some more people on a, no business?
This, this year now, that's where, uh, these.
These guys are here for.
Right, yeah, they've got their building sites all ready to go. And, um, I'll, I'll let Mike start.
Sure, whoever wants to go first.
History and.
So, yeah, I've owned the property up there for over twenty years at this point. I'm the, uh, kind of farthest up on the northeast side. And so we had pulled power about two years back, septic's going in this, this year. Uh, I'm on the, um, getting my well lined up for maybe this fall, probably next spring. So we're getting ourselves positioned to actually build up there. And so it's kinda come time to make sure we have the road agreement and have everything in, in place so that we have the access that we need to, to live up there year round. That's our ultimate plan. And so, um, coming back, and this is where I've been kinda working with Jay. I mean, they got the road, Ben opening it up, up as far as Jay's place, which is the part that is kinda common with the, the snowmobile club. Up and beyond there, the snowmobile club really doesn't use the road. The, the bypass go, go past, goes past it and actually comes out past my place. So I've just kinda teamed up with these guys just to kinda make sure that we have that road agreement in place and we're good to go forward and, uh, keep the road maintained and open for, for winter access.
Mike, when you bought this ground, you knew it was on a groomed trail?
No, I owned it before it was on a groomed trail. And so.
You said you had it twenty years, that's right?
Yeah, so we came down and we actually, at the time that they asked to bring in the grooming shit, that was one of our stipulations as the landlords, and there was more of us at that time. And we came in, we said, yeah, recreation's great, we have no problem with the grooming and whatnot. We just need our access to our property.
You have anything in paper that says that?
Um, I have a lit, written letter that I submitted, so you guys should have it on file. And there was multiple property owners that submitted at that time. Before that hearing, it was.
Could you still have that letter, could you resubmit that?
I don't have, it was twenty, well, when they put it in, two thousand and three, so it was like seventeen years ago. So I don't have, I'll look to see if I have it.
So you can find that.
But we, and at that time, it was, you know, right now, it's not uncommon for West Mountains kinda shared with the snowmobiles, they come up and down and that. And so it was kind of a given that it wouldn't be a problem that we would be able to share that portion of the road, just as the same as we do on West Mountain today. And with the work that Jay has done, not even a quarter mile that, that is, that is, uh, being shared at this point, and then everything above it, this snowmobile club doesn't even use. So, um, I think we all kinda left there with the idea that everyone was gonna be happy, everyone was gonna get what they needed, and had our blessing for the, for the grooming project.
Mark, what do you got?
So I'm, uh, living in Eagle, I'm an anesthesiologist with St. Luke's. And my wife and I purchased a property up here, as our plan will be to start helping coverage the new hospital, uh, up here in McCall. Um, so I got a building, building site placed, I'm just north of Jay, the next property, uh, north of that.
Above the road?
Yeah. If you recall, last year we met, uh, midwinter, I was on the call. Um, and so that time, it looked pretty favorable. You suggested that we get everyone in the neighborhood, I guess. So we have nine to ten people, uh, to sign the road maintenance agreement. And, uh, it appears that we're being asked to do more now at this point, which is inconsistent with what appears to be going on in other parts of the community.
What are you, what are you talking about? I mean, uh, what else are you being asked to do besides what Jay's doing?
HOA. Being asked to form an HOA to, for a county road, which doesn't make sense. I mean, we all have properties, if there, none of us wanna have an HOA that comes with a lot of other governance, um, or, you know? Why, why would we do that just for this? So we're just.
That's even technically required. I think it was just, maybe it's something that they would like to have, but we just don't see that being done.
Normally, the reason why we ask is we need a contact person that's gonna be there for a long time. Because the contact people come and go, people sell, and very soon you don't have the same, you're dealing with the same people, yeah.
We'll have ten people, right, so, that are on the road agreement, so we, we have contact.
Is that, is it, is it actually, I'm sorry, is it actually a subdivision?
No.
No, no, there's property owners along the.
HOA stuff wouldn't apply anyway, no.
We had never even considered it.
No.
So Jay, have you seen the new MOU that Larry sent out?
No.
Did you send?
No. I didn't, I haven't seen the old MOU from last year, uh, so I certainly haven't seen the new one, so.
Um, well, this is not an action, there's nothing we can do today. Um, I guess since you haven't seen it, you need to look at it. I think it's still gonna be an easy peasy. The issue comes down to honestly, over there, you guys, is when we get enough snow to use the bypass. If we don't get a good hard winter, you don't get a lot of snow, they need to stay on, on that road to get to the top. And we, that's where the problem's gonna be.
So we, we've had this discussion, which was two years now. And, yeah, I've had some good conversations with Jeff. He's been great about, you know, that there is obviously no more or less snow on the bypass than on the main road. Okay, and so having, I've said this from the start, I cannot leave eighteen inches of snow on that road for me to have access to all of our properties now. We, we just can't do that.
Jay, you bought that road and it was advertised as a groomed trail. Because I've seen it on your listing.
You've seen that, you said that.
I have seen that, I know in your case it's different.
You say that in every meeting, and I'll tell you, it upends me because these guys have purchased their property, it has had nothing on there. And I told you before, that they actually have a, uh, an ad that shows that it was, did not say that. So I have an ad, and I can show it to you that says it was not advertised.
And I can show you other ads where it said that on a groomed trail.
That's fine.
And we're not gonna argue about that.
We shouldn't argue about that.
Right.
That's fine, I like to move forward, we've made a lot of progress.
And if we don't get a lot of snow, then you can't plow it.
Chairman, I got a question for you in regards to that issue.
Sure.
Uh, West Mountain Road is plowed from, what is it, Tamrac Falls, goes to the bridge?
Mm-hmm.
It's two miles to the junction of no business, that it's plowed.
Yeah, it seems, seems there's no problem with snowmobiles and recreational vehicles going from that spot all the way down. So I don't think another two miles up no business road would make that much of a difference. If it gives us access to our properties, allows for, uh, emergency services to come up there. Because I called them, and they said we'd have no problem coming up there as long as we can get up the road.
As long as it's plowed.
Yeah.
That's all we're looking for, shared use, just the same as West Mountain. West Mountain is shared use today, and it's plowed by the county. And they plow it from, you know, from Snowfall. And we're.
That's a different situation than this, that's not a groomed trail. That's a county road that's winter maintained and plowed. This is a groomed trail that's been that way for, not as long as you've been here, but for a long time.
Quarter mile, it could be plowed, and it wouldn't hurt their access.
Yeah, well, what I'd like to do is, Larry.
Form a way to drive.
If you can share this new MOU with Jake, so these guys can look at it. Go ahead. I need you to come up to the mic though, because people are listening to this.
Larry Lexon Parks, Rec Director. Actually, the new MOU, MOU is not finished. Oki sent it to me as a rough draft, and there's a couple other changes that need to be made before we send it out. And then today, I received a piece of news that just kinda makes this a little more difficult, but I think we can get by it. Michael Reeves from the Voice of Forests said that the wildlife biologist is questioning the permit to use the bypass at all. But I'm sure we can get by that, but right now, we do not have permission to use the bypass.
And isn't there a reg with the Forest Services, we have to have eighteen inches of snow on that bypass before we can groom it?
Well, all, all of our groomed trails with IDPR. They own the groomers, say we have to have eighteen inches before we can use it. Now, later in the year, after we pack it down and we get the ice, um, the whole idea is because we don't wanna damage the groomers or the, the ground that we're running on. But that's where that comes from, is IDPR.
And I wanna say thanks, Jay, for help with that bypass. I mean, that, that shows great intent, and I think eventually we're gonna get this figured out to where, um, where the rub comes is when the snowmobiles come up here and there's no snow. And it just makes it a challenge everywhere.
I, so as you know, I have never been opposed to snow, I'm a snowmobiler. I ride down my driveway, and I, I, we, none of us are ever talking about blocking the road. I've put a lot of money into the bypass and a lot of labor. So I have no heartbreak with that. My issue is, and in fact, so to be clear, I think it might be a little confusion, is I will not touch half the road, okay? So, and Larry knows this, we get in, every year, I think, in fact, when I plow my half of the road, I blow it. So I've offered to blow snow over into the trail to make it better for them. And then I was stopped the last year for blowing snow over into that side to actually build it up to the eighteen inch base.
Was there dirt in the snow?
No, I use a blower, and the blower, that knows this, there's skids on the blower.
Hmm.
So, it'll only, I still leave like a three inch base because the skids will only allow me to go that deep. So, anyway, so I am trying to help them by blowing it open.
Help, help me to understand this. I'm sorry. Mr. Rassburg understands this situation, and so does Larry, but I'm new to it.
Right, I understand.
So, what we got here is you got no business road, and they're using it for snowmobile above where your property is. It's all groomed and it's snowmobile, right?
Yes, sir.
Going up to it, now, you, I believe as you mentioned, uh, we groom the road from a map bottom up a ways, is that correct?
Quarter of a mile, quarter mile.
And the snowmobiles use that to get to the groomed section, right?
Yes, sir.
So, what I'm saying is, if they grew, if they, if you were allowed to plow it on up, it's still accessible to them to use.
Well, sir, just to be clear, here's another thing, is, and, and Larry and all these guys know this, but probably half of the snowmobiles don't use the groomed trail.
Okay.
They come right up our plowed, just as they do the two miles coming up West Mountain.
So, what's the issue here?
So, the issue is, is that the, these guys are asking me to leave eighteen inches of snow. What, essentially, I have half the north side of the road. We have half the north side of the road for our access in and out. We live here full-time, so it's not a part-time thing, and so we use half of the road. And then we leave the other half for the groom, uh, for the groomed trail, right? It goes a quarter mile up, and then I paid for and worked on a bypass that goes up, and it actually comes above Mr. Cunliffe's property. So, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody. They have a groomed trail that goes all the way up there.
Wouldn't they have snow, a good enough snow for it, right?
Which the snow's gonna come or it's not. I mean, I, me blowing snow off of half of the road, Commissioner, sir, is my issue. I have no heartburn with doing that, but I'd have heartburn with not plowing that half, especially if we get until eighteen inches.
So, what you're saying is, no, let me plow so at least I can drive on it.
Right.
And you can also use it for snowmobiles.
Right.
Is that a problem, Larry?
The county does the same thing for the two miles that they're plowing all the county road.
Right.
Commissioners, there isn't a problem. We're just trying to get the, or trying to get the, uh, the permit fixed so it's right to where all of my permits go to Oki, every single one of them now. And he wants to add some language to protect the county.
Sure.
And Jay's in a hurry to get the permit signed. I can't do anything about the permit getting signed. That's the problem. It worked fairly well last year. We got some things to work out, but we can work them out. We just gotta wait until, uh, uh, Councilor's Office has the permit ready the way it needs to be, and then we can move forward. That's all we got.
Really, I mean, it really doesn't sound like a huge problem. It's just a matter of timing for permit.
That's basically what we're at.
So, we started this process three months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, three months ago to get the permit done, and, and I've told Larry this too, you know, if, if we know that it's all good. I've had a bad incident, as you know, Commissioner. Uh, I got rejected. Uh, I was denied access to my property for winter by a previous commissioner, and so obviously, uh, I'm a bit cautious and nervous about not having access to our property.
Okay.
If I, if I know that it's gonna be that way, you know.
And I'm in a, in a position where I'm not gonna put a huge financial commitment to leverage my property, and I've seen the, the, just the turmoil that, that, that they put Jay through here, and it's like, we need to get something that we can all agree with, that is something that's renewable year over year. I think Jay and his, his work with, with the, uh, um, snowmobile club to come up with a reasonable compromise. We just need to solidify on this and get it done, and it just gets concerning that it, we're two years into this, three months before the, you know, uh, or three months into it this season, and we're coming up, you know, in a month and a half on possibly having to put it in place. It still isn't there. So, this is just, makes me wonder how much I wanna invest.
Mike, I think it's really important for you to understand that there's a lot of things the county government, county government can only do on an annual basis. We can't do ten-year contracts and five-year contracts by Idaho Code, so a lot of this has to be renewed every year. By law, we have to do this. It's not that we're choosing to do it. My feeling is right now, I know Oki is, he's a very busy guy. He's got a lot on his plate, but I think we got a little bit more summer left, and I'm sure we'll have it before the snow flies, right?
Okay.
And we, and then we'll have the MOU designed, um, up at, most of it is deals with liability issues. Who's gonna be held liable if somebody hits the back of his contractor plowing snow? Who's gonna? It's on a county road, so we're trying to protect the taxpayers. So, it's coming, but, you know, I would, uh, I think, I don't think there's a big issue, Jay. I think we are getting along pretty well.
Yeah.
I think we've learned that there's some things we don't do to snowmobiles, and there's some that we do, and, and it's coming, but I, we can't do anything today.
Is there any kind of declaration we can make that gives them a timeframe that we can expect that to work with?
If this was an action item, maybe, but it's not. It's not an action, but I think probably another, what, month?
It's- Commissioners, the modified MOU has been submitted to the Commissioners a fore review to submit to, uh, the landowners for their review, and if the landowners are, uh-
But he's just saying he didn't get it.
He hasn't yet because it's been presented to the Commissioners. So, today was the day for it to be, uh, for them to come in, come in and voice their concerns, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Commissioners received this on Friday of last week. Uh, the proposed MOU, we can provide it to the landowners. They can have an opportunity to review it. If they are, uh, not satisfied, then there'll probably be some discussions with Recreation Director Larry Laxson. He'll discuss that with, uh, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and then in the very near future, we can potentially get this matter on for approval.
Okay.
So, Mr. Melbridge, a quick question. So, this has been an issue in the past too, Commissioner, uh, is that what's happened in the past is that, you know, I've made, you've heard me make my comments about, you know, disagreeing with this or that, or agreeing with whatever, and in a disagreement, uh, nothing has ever been changed in an MOU that I've disagreed with. So, I'm hoping that in this case, if there's some issues that we might have, you know, that I'd, I'd like for, I'd like to be heard. Do I have to come to this meeting? Do we have to come to this meeting to be heard on these issues?
I would say the day that we do an action item and we vote on this MOU, yeah, I would be here for that. But in the meantime, you need to work with Larry and Oki on any disagreements you have, and if you don't get those resolved, or you're not happy, then come to us and ask us.
Well, you know my issue.
Does that make sense?
My issue, certainly. Uh, my issue's not gonna be with him at all, with Oki. Uh, it'll be a liability issue, and I'll need, we'll need X amount of coverage or whatever. That's not an issue. We don't have any heartburn with that. The issue is, again, the biggest issue that has been, two things. One is that, you know, you want me to leave eighteen inches of snow on my side of the road. That I can't do. I don't think that's unreasonable, and I, I don't think that's, is that in that agreement? I don't know.
Um-
Larry? Is that in that agreement?
Let's see. And that's frankly a safety issue for people that live there. You're like, you can't get a fire or safety services in, right?
You might not even be able to get into your property if there's eighteen inches of snow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds like you do have a couple specifics that needs to be in that agreement.
Talks about liability, weapons comp. I don't see anything that says eighteen inches, but-
There's some things, and I sent an email to Oki, there's some things in here we need to make some changes to. At least, take them from the old MU, MOU to put them in this new MU. This is basically written for all the county. It's not a specialized one or a snow grooming agreement. We just need to make some changes, and, you know, I've sent some comments to Oki today. Yeah, done. Hopefully, we can get it worked out quickly.
So, I guess my advice, everybody just be patient and wait for it to come, and we'll see you in hopefully less than a month.
The second part would be from, uh, now, uh, everybody's building above me. Now, you know, we're looking to maintain that road up to Mr. Cunliffe's place, who's, you know, so, we talked about this with, uh, Mr. Stacy and the, the California guy that was gonna buy Colorado Peggy's place. Colorado. Colorado, sorry, yes, I'm sorry, sorry, Colorado. Uh, he was gonna buy that place, and somehow, you know, that fell through. But anyway, uh, we're meeting everything that was recommended in that meeting. We've got everybody on board, so I think we're good to go.
Right now, the names I have that's gonna be in, under this MOU is Jay Maynard and Jefferson Washburn, Ben and Mary Ellis Arnold, Dwayne Maynard, Todd and Debbie Merritt, Jay and Sylvia Jakes, Marcy, Mark Stacy, Ray and Peggy Zemke, Michael Cunliffe, Brian Wright, and Chris Newland, Hannibal Smith, and Kyle Cundy. So, everybody's gonna have the same thing. We're all gonna get this done, and then hopefully next year it'll be real easy peasy.
That's great.
You know, we're not perfect, but we're trying.
We're both trying.
Be patient, guys, and we'll get it done.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Doug, you wanna finish up?
It's really up to you, Mr. Chairman. Wanna do that at one? I mean, later, that, that's kinda-
Yeah, let's go ahead, and we'll recess for lunch now, and then we will come back and, uh, pick this up after one o'clock. Sometime in the middle of the afternoon somewhere.